In the next fall, the meeting to order at 5:03. The purpose of the meeting is to attend to about a half hour's worth of regular business. And then we are going to move into and then we're going to move into a two and a half hour training. We do have our potluck, so we may want to at some point in the training we'll stop. We'll have a little food and then we'll call it you maybe decide when we want to do that or the group as a whole can decide that as well in training. So we have public here, but it's public who's going to be on the agenda. Do we have any other?
Nobody online.
So I'm going to not read the plan and all of that. So we'll move right into the board is being asked to we have a request from a parent, Catherine Hayes, who's here to have the district pay tuition to Williamstown so her son can attend school there. So everyone should have gotten the letter from Catherine that sort of stated the reasoning for the request. I'm going to let you have a few minutes if you have anything else you want to bring up or maybe if you'd like to say something.
Sounds good. So thank you all for having us this afternoon. My name is Catherine. This is Jürgen Hayes, stand up please sir, our rising sixth grader and his sister Ellie Hayes, who is a rising 10th grader at Williamstown Middle High School. Ellie had the benefit of going to the high school through the lottery. Our request is based on the true hardship that it would be for Jürgen to go to school in district. We are geographically located in East Brookfield, almost at the Williamstown line. You in fact, I have a shape, like a, you know, a sketchy little map, but you have to go through Chelsea just a little bit. So we're like right in, we're like there in the far corner of Brookfield. I've been homeschooling up until next year. Jürgen's going to reintegrate into the classroom, hopefully in Williamstown. Jürgen has been part of the Williamstown Youth Sports Association for a few years. All of his basketball friends and soccer friends and AAU basketball friends are based in Williamstown. If he were to have to attend a school in district, it would likely prevent him from participating in after-school activities in Williamstown. Furthermore, my office is in Burlington, Vermont. I work for the Chitting County Public Defender's Office. I'm the lead juvenile attorney in that office. I cannot afford the tuition in Williamstown. That's another reason that we're here to make a hardship argument. So I would be happy to answer any questions, but there's no doubt in Jürgen's, Jürgen has a tutor. His name is Ed Scott. He works on our truancy docket. And Ed would assert that the best transition for Jürgen back into the classroom setting would be in Williamstown where his sister's there, his friends are there. It would permit the least stressful reentry. Brookfield Elementary has not historically been a good fit for us. I would prefer to answer any questions about that privately. If you do have any questions, we are absolutely engaged with the Williamstown school system, library, youth sports, and other community activities. So that's why we're here.
Do any board members have questions for Catherine?
Question for Michael.
Okay, well, then I was going to turn it over to Michael to just sort of give sort of the district's perspective on this.
Yeah, here's your overview. So elementary school tuition and whatnot is governed by Title 16, Section 821. And I'm going to read a couple of sections to you. Each school district shall maintain one or more approved schools within the district in which elementary education for its resident students in kindergarten through grade six provided is provided unless. And so then there are some exceptions. So we operate a school in accordance with 821. One of the exceptions, so why don't I read them all? The electorate authorizes the school board to provide the elementary education of students by paying tuition in accordance with law to one or more public elementary schools in one or more school districts. So our electorate hasn't done that, so that's out. The school district is organized to provide only high school education for its students. It's not us. Or three here, the general assembly provides otherwise, which it hasn't. Then we go into the subsection of that general assembly. Notwithstanding subsection A, without previous authorization from the electorate, a school board in a district that operates an elementary school may, "may" becomes the operative word there, pay tuition for elementary students who reside near a public elementary school in an adjacent district upon the request of the student's parent or guardian if, in the school board's judgment, the student's education can be more conveniently furnished there due to geographic considerations. And then it goes, that's, there's one more subsection which says, notwithstanding subsection A of this section, the electorate of a school district that does not maintain an elementary school may grant general authority to the board to pay tuition for an elementary student in an approved independent elementary school or an independent school meeting education quality standards. And so that doesn't apply here. So it's only that one section C that's going on there. Generally speaking, I've been at this for 27 years in Vermont. Generally, schools haven't done this where I've worked because what it does is once you make a decision, it opens a door so that you're going to be paying tuition for other people to go to schools outside of your school district. By way of comparison, our announced elementary tuition rate for next year is more than $17,000. So I'm not sure what Williamstown is, but.
26.
Okay.
So how would it work? Would we still, would, if Williamstown accepted it, would they just get the 17? Or we would have to come up with the 26?
No, you would pay Williamstown $26,000.
Does this open, if we were to approve this, would it, would we also be responsible for having to provide by transportation or anything?
You would not provide transportation.
And I can just add to this if I may. May I address the board? The Brookfield Elementary School is literally on the opposite side of Brookfield from our home and would require more than an extra hour for me both ways driving. My office is in Burlington and downtown Burlington. We would assert that it is an absolute geographic hardship to make Brookfield work and that Williamstown is definitely in Jürgen's best interest in terms of who he already knows there. I know that your decision has to be based on geography. I've heard the perspective that if we let this family do it, we're opening the door to other families. I don't know of any other families who have put as much time and effort into this pursuit as we have. We've gone to Payne Mountain. We started with a request that we then appealed to Payne Mountain. This is a different statutory framework by which Jürgen could potentially be with his sister and his friends at a school that he already knows. And so we are, we are very, very respectfully and just really, really asking you to consider this as a possibility for him and not weigh the concern that has not come to fruition in 27 years that, or excuse me, the concern that other families are going to open the door and try to, you know, sort of school shop. It's a completely geographic-based hardship from my perspective. And if there's any question, I don't know if it would help the board to hear from Jürgen's tutor, who I would assert is an expert in education where I am not about his view as to why Jürgen should be able to attend Williamstown. But I'm not, I don't know if that would be allowed.
I think the statute when it considers geographic isolation is probably talking about a situation where transportation isn't provided by the school that is probably much farther away than what's going on. I think in Catherine's letter, you're pretty clear that the distance from school to Williamstown to Brookfield, from your house to either school is about the same distance.
Except for the fact that my office is in Burlington.
True story. Understood.
And I work for the state, so.
Understand. I think that the statute considers the geographic not necessarily in the direction. I think in this case, we provide transportation and a bus route goes right, right past the house and.
Respectfully, the bus route, I think, is at the bottom. I'm not sure if they come up to cemetery. I haven't looked. But it's a, it's a 6:45 a.m. get on the bus. On the back end, Jürgen would not make it to his after-school activities with his existing teams. He would not be home until probably about four o'clock. So that would prevent him from doing his after-school activities in Williamstown.
Okay, we've, yeah, we've heard that. Do you know, do you know the bus? Do you have, you don't have those specifics?
I know that Craig would send the bus to the location and as long as it's not, the house isn't on a class four road or a dangerous road, the bus would go door to door like it does everywhere else.
So I don't know, I want to ask this question. It's a little off the tangent perhaps. But if, if we're 17 and 17 as opposed to 17 and 26 for the cost differences there, would that make any difference? And then my other question would be, is it at all reasonable to see whether the parent would be willing to?
Statute does not consider having the parent pay partial tuition. You'd be responsible for the full announced tuition of Williamstown. And then the 17 and the 17, I think a little bit what you're looking at here is, so our announced tuition is based on working through a formula. And the formula puts our announced tuition just a little bit more than that $17,000. In reality, when we add a student or lose a student, it doesn't cost us $17,000 more or whatever. So the bottom line with that is it's not really a cost kind of thing going on there in that sense.
You just pay the other school.
Well, in this case, so when you pay tuition, so having been a superintendent for a choice town, it's very different than when you operate a school. So as students come into OSSD, we move them into classrooms all the time and we don't come to you as a board saying, we need $17,000 more to educate this student. When you're in a tuitioning town, we actually have to account for the fact that when a new family comes in, you've got to have the $17,000, fictitiously using $17,000 as the example because it's ours, but whatever the, whatever the average area is, you actually build that into your budget.
Procedural question, do we do the complete conversation and decision at this moment?
You do.
I guess what I'm thinking is I totally hear that this is a really difficult situation for your family. And I think the concern that I have is that allocating this much money for one student to have a better situation that I think many people, you know, a lot of these situations are not ideal for many families in terms of pickup and activities and changing friend groups. It's all really hard. It really is. And I'm concerned about the impact on the broader school district to lose funds because it's not like it's $27,000 lost is just the cost of one student. It's like that goes to pay our teachers and things that are not allocated one-on-one. And so it's a much bigger loss for all of our kids. And I guess I get very uncomfortable with the inequality of like providing this much funding for one student even though it is a really, really hard situation. And I really feel that as a parent especially.
And typically before you open up to discussion, you usually put a motion on the table.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
Oh, okay.
That would be my suggestion is that.
Are we ready? Are we ready to have a motion? Do I have a motion?
Then you go in, once you get a motion on the table, there's the opportunity for discussion about that motion.
Thank you.
Do we have this, are we ready to move? Make a motion? Yay or nay?
Yay, I move to open the discussion to Catherine Hayes' request?
No, no.
No, no. Do you have to move to, do you move to either accept the request or reject the request?
Then you have the discussion around that. And if you need to have another motion because that motion fails, so be it.
I see.
Did this, did this come to you first and then to us? Is this an appeal of sorts?
The statute says that it's you who decides.
It comes directly to us.
And we can't go to executive session?
You cannot go into executive session.
So it would be either we move to approve Catherine's request or you move to deny.
Correct.
So I guess I already kind of said, I mean, I, that I, this is hard.
It is.
It is hard.
This is really hard.
It's a hard one.
But I guess that based on what I just said, I would make a motion to deny the request.
Seconded.
More discussion?
I think I just want to support what Rachel said. It's incredibly hard as a parent. And I think about having worked in Warren and having a kid going to school in the, you know, in Randolph Village, that is added a significant amount of time for me when we were living three miles from the Brookfield Elementary School, but technically in Randolph Center. I think geographically, there are a lot of very difficult things about Vermont. And in working and having children and trying to do the very best you can for your children is a hardship. And I hear you, my kids get on the bus at 6:45.
May I just respond by saying the Brookfield Elementary School is, is in this district? So he, so there's a different procedure if we were saying Randolph, not Brookfield or Braintree, not Brookfield. Procedurally, that's different.
Yeah. We're, we're going to keep the discussion to just the board at this point, not enough.
Yeah, that's all right. So I'm just, I guess recognizing that it is, I hear you. It would have also been significantly easier for my children to be in school in Warren for me as a parent. And I think there are a lot of parents in our district. I think about Roxbury, their entire community travels through two other school districts to go to school right now. Or Granville, which sits between Braintree and Rochester. And my concern is that it really, along with Rachel's concern, it opens a school up to a lot of inequity for other students.
Respectfully, I, this is very expensive. And we have had students commute to both Brookfield and Randolph from Cemetery, from Cemetery Street and East Hill for their existence of the school. So although I hear the need, I can't responsibly say $26,000 to break precedent like this is a responsible use of our funds.
I just would like to make a comment and I'm not up to speed on it. But there's been a lot of things that have just surfaced in the past week in terms of school choice kinds of considerations too. I don't know the dynamics of it, but I'm just going to put it out there as a potential line of hope for you to consider and you should dig into it as well.
That was our first approach.
And my original question was the lottery is for high school only?
Correct. It's a different statute that governs that.
And that's nine through 12 or?
It's nine through 12. Yep.
Okay, are we ready to take a vote?
And do we move to the vote just like we?
Nope.
No, we just, we're going to go ahead and take a vote. So all those in favor, say aye.
Favor of denying.
Favor of denying the request to pay for Williamstown tuition. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, but I'd add with regrets.
All those opposed, aye or nay? So the motion passes.
Thank you.
You know, that's really hard. All right, so we will move on to the Payne Mountain meeting. A few of us were not able to attend. So what we're going to be doing here is just bringing everybody up to speed in terms of what occurred and maybe just sort of get on the back burner, our next steps in that process. So I'm going to ask Michael to, he was willing to just sort of summarize and then other folks who were at the meeting can chime in if there was.
Dylan, anything I miss, right? So I thought it was a really great meeting. The Payne Mountain seemed to be on the same page as the Orange Southwest Board. You guys talked a lot about similar, similar concepts. I mean, I think almost kiddingly, the meeting got kicked off with one of the board members saying, well, if we're building a new bright shiny building on the hill, then I'm all in, right? And that was really the moment to me where it led all the tension out of the room and whatnot because I think that is sort of what we're, we're thinking or at least one of the things that you as a board are looking at because you're bringing this out as you're looking at a building that is ready to be replaced and pretty clearly from the feasibility study, needs to be replaced. And so you're looking at what's going on there. There was lots of talk about H454 and what impact that would have on this process and H454.
I'm seeing Nathan Wright would like to be in.
Thank you. Okay, so I think there was conversation about how H454 would have, what kind of impact it might have on this. And I think that's really kind of an unknown question. Yesterday, I got an email from the Superintendent's Association that the committee has been selected, the group that's charged with drawing the lines. And so I think that'll be interesting. There are at least two by statute, two informational meetings that that committee has to, has to have. I've actually, we had money in ESER funds and we had signed a contract with Up For Learning. So converted that contract that we already had into working with Up For Learning and at least the OSSD, but I'm going to put it out to a wider community in central Vermont to say, hey, what are we looking for? What's our vision for what a larger district in central Vermont might look like? And my hope would be that we would have a group ready to go and talk at one of those public meetings. But Up For Learning does lots of work with communities, but especially through the lens of students' eyes. And I think that that's a powerful piece of this. So I think that at the end of the meeting, the decision was we would have another meeting in August. I think it was the 20th, it's that third Wednesday. And in the meantime, Superintendent Fedders and I were to reach out to or are to reach out to Montpelier, U32, White River Valley, and Gary to see if any of those folks have interest in joining us in the conversation. You know, I think that part of that conversation is the bigger that it gets, the more likely there would be more than one high school or something along that kind of line. But the bottom line with it was we stayed at a really high level so that it's an inclusive meeting that anybody can come to and say, hey, what do we think? How do we want our voice to be heard? And we didn't get deep down into anything. And so I think that's, I think that's where we're, where we're at. Matt and I are working on that letter and I would expect that it would go out to other superintendents and boards next week. I did talk with Jamie Conarny in White River Valley this week and he's looking forward to getting that letter from us. So that's good.
So should we all make sure we have August 20th?
That's a Wednesday.
On, on our calendars.
And will we have two then? One with us and one with the big group?
It's going to be a very, very.
So I think last time, my, last time I grabbed a quick little segment of that because we had things that had come up from our last meeting to that meeting. So it'd be warned as a special meeting and it would just be whatever you guys decide. You have another regular meeting before that meeting's going to get warned. What's that?
13th for the other one.
You do have your regular meeting on the 13th of August.
And that will be the Randolph Elementary?
Kyle might know right that.
It says right here in our board packet, R E S.
Okay.
Yep, there it is.
And I think there are three in here that, the three sticking out that you might see perhaps.
Oh, and there are all those.
Okay. So I think that's kind of where, I think that's kind of where that is. In the meantime, H454 did pass. I think at that point, the last time that we had the meeting, it had not passed yet, but it looked like it was going to pass. And so now we know that it has. We know who's on the, on the committee for drawing the lines. We know that the next step for H454 is that committee doing its work.
Who in this area is on that committee?
There, I think as I look at that list, there was not someone from Orange County.
Wow, oh God.
But there are only 11 people on that. So we knew that there was going to be three counties that weren't having people on it. There was somebody from Washington County. There was definitely people from Windsor, so around us, there were people.
More than one from Windsor.
What's that?
More than one from Windsor.
More than one, yeah.
No, well.
All right, so moving on, unless there are other questions or there's anything that we missed regarding the Payne Mountain?
The meeting on the 20th, is it at Williamstown High School again?
I do not know what the location of it will be. As we get closer, I'm sort of guessing that they might move between Northfield and Williamstown and whatnot.
I can find out. I'll let you know as soon as possible.
Some, yeah, whatever.
We'll definitely know by the 13th.
That would be great.
Yeah. If you can, you might want to just tentatively put the 20th in your calendar so you don't double book. So the next item on our agenda is the support staff contract. And this will be. Um, and this will be a request from the board to uh kind of motion to uh. Redline, is that what we do or do we accept it? Do we just, what is the terminology?
You use whatever, you use whatever term you want and it'll be fine.
Say, accept, accept.
Sounds, sounds great.
Accept that you have.
So if you put that motion on the table, then you can open it up to discussion.
Okay, so do we?
Uh, I move to accept the support staff contract.
Great.
Any discussion? Any questions about it?
You need a second before you can discuss.
Oh, right.
Second. Second.
Second by Sam.
Now you're into discussion.
Alright, any discussion?
Um, before we vote on this, I want to say thank you to everyone involved, especially Michael Pietro and Dr. Rachel and Martha and. And for being part of this very lengthy process. It was trying at times, um, but also, you know, Lisa Wright and everybody on her team. Uh, for being uh diplomatic and reasonable, so it was, it was lengthy process, but I think we found a wonderful compromise.
I think we accomplished our goals. I think that part of what we were looking at was how do we move our starting salary up to a good wage? And most of our starting salaries now for our support staff are over twenty dollars an hour. So we have, I think there are four spots where you can be at nineteen fifty-ish. So um, we're really excited about that. There's some extra work that comes out of this. There were some committees that need to be formed. You're gonna have to appoint some people to attend those, those committee meetings. And we can talk about that at the, at the regular meeting. You have the language, I sent you the language changes. Of in your packet or after your packet. I had met with Lisa Wright and we both agreed that those were all of the language changes that we. Agreed to and Kyle turned that into the staff, the support staff agreement. Uh. It was interesting because we didn't have a, the copy of the support staff agreement that we had had been optically scanned. Like on a copier and when you try to convert an optically scanned PDF into a editable document, it's not pretty. And so a lot of work went into getting this cleaned up and looking good. Uh, so it's ready to be signed if you, if you accept it tonight.
So are we ready to take a vote? All those in favor of accepting the support staff agreement? Aye.
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 Alright, that passes unanimously. Uh, and our last uh meeting agenda item is the board member openings. We now have. Three folks who have um submitted a letter of interest. So in the past, what we've done is. We've um interviewed all of the candidates and then had the board have an opportunity to ask them some questions. For them to ask us some questions and then um we interview all three of them and then we go into executive session and we appoint one of them, so. We weren't gonna have time to do that. We didn't even know that we had a third uh candidate when we were setting the agenda, so. We, we, the statute says that we have to appoint them within thirty days of their resignation, so that's before our August thirteen. Meeting, so um. We may, we could, we could, it's only a few, it's a few days after that thirtieth. Michael said no one would come from the state looking and saying, hey, you haven't done this. Um, but if we think about kind of what the board needs to be doing to get started in August, it might be easier to just do. Uh, a special meeting sometime in the next couple of weeks. And, and get that done so we can have that person ready to go for August, so. I am looking for uh maybe some suggestions or, or um. A proposal for how we want to move forward with that.
And I guess I'd like to know, does that mean that the um position is, you're not accepting any additional positions or is there a cutoff date for that or? It's up for us to decide.
This is your process.
For us to decide.
Uh, well, it was already announced, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Did you, in the, in the announcement, did it have a, a deadline?
Yep, it was, it was the, yesterday?
Yesterday, okay, so.
Before this meeting.
Very good, and there was a deadline. We shouldn't stick to that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And not accept it.
I'd definitely like to follow the process that has been followed of getting to meet folks and hear from them and ask them questions.
Yeah, I think that makes sense to do it before August because then we'll, we could. Anyway, sort of rearrange committees and going into the new school year, be sort of ready to go.
I think it's helpful for people who are interested to also kind of get a sense of how the board works because we definitely had one candidate who heard about how the board worked and was like, actually, never mind. Like took himself out running, so.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so I guess, do we have uh some proposals for a date and time for when we might want to schedule this?
I have a question procedurally along that line. Is the date going to be also the day that we decide? I wouldn't mind having. A, a vote that might happen a couple of days later so that you had a couple, a chance to do any reflections or. Follow-ups or whatever, but you might want to do.
I think it, um. I think because we'd all have to come together, it would have to be warned. It makes sense to come together. We have letters from people ahead of time that we can take into consideration. But I think trying to come together once as opposed to twice is maybe.
I didn't know whether it could be coming together by Zoom and be able to be done with it real quick kind of scenario.
Historically, we've done it all in one. It doesn't mean that we have to do it that way. People want, if people want to have multiple meetings, but historically we've done it in one meeting.
How long does that have to be warned?
It's a special meeting, but twenty-four, twenty-eight hours.
Twenty-four. Oh, okay.
You have plenty.
Do you guys wanna? Do you want us to get done next, can we do it next week?
I can do it next week.
I am trying to get into my work calendar that I can let you know.
So is that Wednesday the sixteenth?
Get it done in like twenty-two weeks.
Right? Wednesday the sixteenth.
Yep. Yeah, I, uh, I can't, I, I can do it.
Will we, will we be in person? Is this gonna be in person or in virtual?
Well, it can be a hybrid meeting. We do have to have somebody here.
I will be here. So the statute now says that we're back to not being able to have just an in-person or a.
Just a virtual.
So I will be in person, staffing a space.
Thank you.
So yes, I can, sixteenth can work, seventeenth also works.
It sounds like you might prefer the seventeenth.
Well, I do, but I don't want to.
I, I, I also.
No, it's, you all keep your calendars up to date in your phone.
So do we want to offer two, two days, two dates and two times or just do it all?
I would rather do it all.
And if they, and if somebody can't make it.
They don't get the job.
You are a stickler.
You gotta be, you gotta be committed.
I know, it's summer and people are on vacation. I don't think that's really fair.
I know, I'm.
I, I understand, I don't.
Do we want to?
It's kind of in my own spirit.
So why don't, why don't we?
Or we'll start with the sixteenth, that'll be our priority.
Okay, and does the twenty-third work for people? It sounds like Rachel, that was not.
I mean, I, oh, no, I actually can't do the twenty-third, but I, I mean, I'm on vacation, but I can, I can Zoom.
You've got to Zoom in.
I can do it, yeah.
Yeah, but not on the twenty-third.
Okay.
Okay.
The twenty-second?
Twenty-second.
I can do the twenty-second.
So why don't we, why don't we offer the sixteenth and twenty-second?
Sounds good.
And see what, what the candidates can do.
What, what, what dates are we gonna do?
Sixteenth and twenty-second.
Sixteenth.
I think offer the sixteenth and if somebody can't make it then.
That way we don't end up with people just.
Twenty-two as a backup.
Okay, so.
And we're, are we presuming like six as usual or?
I think that probably works better for people who are working.
Yeah.
Yep, yep, it does.
And July twenty-second is our backup. Okay, so.
So how do you want me to set that up with, I'm assuming that I'm reaching out to the three candidates and.
You got the emails. Um, I can send you what. Um, the, the thing that I, the last time we had to do this.
Was Rachel Fish.
Was Rachel Fish, I don't know.
I think I was the only candidate, so it was pretty.
Yeah, so that, so we didn't do that.
We do.
Sam did interviews.
With Sam who did the interview thing. Was it helpful to get a email just sort of outlining the process before you did the process or?
Yeah, I mean, I was walking through security in Boston, Logan Airport. I don't think there was any level of preparation that could have made a scary point.
Did you do like fifteen-minute interviews or what did you do?
Yeah, yeah, I have a little word from, from Sam's time that I can send you, Michael.
Okay.
Feel some questions.
For my benefit, I mean, are you, do they have the full fifteen minutes? Is there any Q and A kind of thing?
No, there's, there's Q and A.
Yeah.
Okay.
They get a, they get an opportunity to say a few words about why they want to be a candidate and then, and then there's an opportunity for the board members to ask questions. And, and each one gets an allotment of fifteen minutes. That's what we did in the last time. Okay, alright. Super.
So an hour-long meeting, huh?
Yeah, it'll probably be about an hour because we had forty-five minutes.
And this, sorry.
If we're running like a clock.
And then there's a.
And then we do an executive session to make the decision and then we'll email out.
And this appointment, it goes until when Hannah's term would have.
No, it goes until the next town meeting or the next month. That makes Australian ballot, actually.
And then that person will serve until Hannah's regular.
Um.
Whoever's elected, would she do for reelection coming here?
She's up in twen, in twenty-six, so it's only for like six months or so.
Oh, there you go. Yep, so she, so that's the person will be on the regular cycle.
Okay, yes. Okay.
Okay.
Um, so that concludes our four items. Thank you all.
Jump in or do you want to say something?
I'm just glad that, I think you all know that this is Jeannie Collins. Do you want me to tell them how I know you?
Yep. Sure, yeah, sure, that's a great story.
Jeannie Collins gave me my first job in education in Vermont. Can you believe that?
What have you done? What's that? What have you done? I know, really?
She was, she needed a, she needed a one-on-one behavior, they call it a behavior interventionist now, but at that point it was just a para, so.
At Harwood.
In Washington West, yeah.
Harwood Union, yep.
Yep, way back in the day.
That was my first Vermont job too. Harwood Union was, yes.
There you go.
I had just moved to the state and became special ed coordinator and then special ed director and.
Yeah.
Ah, so thanks for having me.
Then behind you is Debbie Singer.
Singhizer, yep.
Singhizer, sorry.
Hi, everybody.
Debbie's official title with the V S P A or the V S A, V S B A.
V S B A.
Cause B A is.
The, I'm the Director for School Board Services, so I do a lot of the board development work and other things and I'm also a school board member. And in fact. In fact, in which, I'm, I'm in Rutland Northeast Supervisory Union, so, and I'm with a district called Barstow. Barstow Unified Union School District. We're in a side-by-side with Potter Valley. We are K through eight district and we tuition our students for high school. Um, I am currently the chair. I, I've been doing the school board work on and off for about nine years. My very first stint was with Jeannie. Because she was the superintendent at Rutland Northeast when I was at, um, when I was first elected. And it's so funny that I, we're both sitting in this room because when we joined, when we, we kind of arrived at the same time. I had a school board colleague who used to work in this district. And this district was already adopting and using very effectively policy governance. And she said to Jeannie. Um, as the new superintendent, let's explore policy governance and consider adopting it for the Rutland, for Barstow.
Right.
But we couldn't speak for the S U or the other district, so.
Yeah, she came on, Erica McLaughlin, she came on the board at the same time Debbie did. The two of them said.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should probably look at this. And so we invited the superintendent at the time and the board chair at the time to come to Barstow and. They told us all about how policy governance works and we were sold. Like we just thought, yes, we want to do this. Because we've been going through some pretty difficult challenges with all sorts of confusion about roles and responsibilities and the way decisions were being made. It was really messy and uncomfortable. And you never wanted to be in a boardroom, right? And it was just awful. So we thought, well, policy governance seems to work so well at Orange Southwest, let's try it. And so thanks to you all.
Yeah.
We are still, and here we are, we're still using it and.
So was that with Brett Kay?
Yes, with Brett Kay, yep.
And Laura Soros.
Laura Soros.
And then we went to, we learned together, you, Erica, well Erica knew, um.
Couple of board members.
Couple of board members went to Marion Cargers training.
Yep.
In Atlanta and then Lane Millington in Orange Southwest brought Marion here. And we brought some more school board members to the training you had at the library at the high school. And that's when Rutland Northeast went to policy governance, so. They've been involved with it um for about seven, I guess, years.
Yeah, we adopted it ten years ago.
But for me, policy governance changed my life as a superintendent. It just absolutely did. Um, I was in the Burlington School District prior to Rutland Northeast. They did not do policy governance. They do now, but they did not at the time. And um, if I were to tell you some stories, it would be like, what? What did you do? And meetings went, you know, pretty much from six to midnight and um. One or two meetings a week with committees that had to be then relived at the board meeting and it was just, you know, like I said, they're doing it now, but they weren't doing it when I was there. And um, when Rutland Northeast went through the Act forty-six merger and adopted it, it was like. A whole new career opened up in front of me, like this is, this is fun, you know, because it's really clear, it became really clear to me what my job was.
Yep.
Versus what the board's job was. And um, that clarity allowed me to get some things done. So since retiring, um, I knew I wanted to stay involved with Vermont schools after so many years in the system. And so I'm doing two things. I'm doing coaching of superintendents and school administrators and then V S B A sponsored me for national certi, international certification. In um, policy governance, so I'm helping, the state used to have um, one or two other consultants and they're out of the work now. So I'm stepping into that gap and helping school districts and I love it, I love it. Because I am located in the Carolinas, I am usually hybrid and it's great to be in a room with people. So it's really nice that, that you had me come. Thank you. Plus I got dinner with my kids. Which I probably do anyway. So um, when we first started talking about tonight, and I know we only have till eight, we talked about four topics. That's not gonna happen, okay? Um, and we can talk about when to get, what we don't get done in at another time. Happy to, you know, I can do it in hybrid. I don't have to come every time. Especially now that we've met, so we can figure that out. But one of the first things, so the four topics we talked about covering was, or that you guys decided on covering is. A review of the accelerator. I'll come back to that in a second. In case you don't remember what that is, I'll remind you. Um, doing a couple of rehearsal scenarios and kind of showing you how they can work into a board meeting to keep learning fresh and your policies fresh. Working on your ends policy and I have lots of ideas for your ends policies, end policy. And then finally, some board self-monitoring and Debbie is. I worked with the Barstow board this year on developing their self-monitoring process and we almost might push that up a little bit because Debbie's in the room, so we'll see if we can manage to get. Get that because she's leading the charge at her own board in that. Okay, everyone's, they still thinking they're in the right place? Okay, good. So board accelerat- So board accelerator, who here has been able to complete it or partially? Yeah, okay, good, all right, so you're all familiar enough with it and perhaps you've gone all the way through. Martha just sat through the PG one oh one training that I gave in Wodzinski as well.
I've also done the other.
And you've also done accelerator. So really what I want to do tonight is, I'm not going to repeat everything, I want to check in with you and give you the opportunity to clarify some of what you learned, um, it's, it's not a new training, it's just, I'm going to walk you through the different, um, principles and then see, and I'll give you a couple of talking points and see what resonates, what questions come up for you and kind of make sure that you're all in the same playing field as you're doing this. So, um, your board spent several months working through this, which is really great, I really loved the model that you, that you put out there and how you did it. And as you know, policy governance model is a practical approach for enabling the board to enable organizational, ensure organizational performance reflecting your owner's best interests, those are all buzzwords in policy governance. And it provides an internally consistent framework of principles and practices for efficient, effective organization of any board's thoughts, activities, structures and relationships. It's a lot of gobbledygook, it's a lot of lingo, but does it make sense now that you've been there? Key points, it's a framework of principles, there are ten principles. It's focused on the board achieving organizational performance and being able to show that achievement to their owners who gave input into what that was. And that it is effective and efficient way of doing your work. Questions, disagreements, challenges around that? Okay. So here's the ten principles, let's touch upon them, and this time I'm going to go in order, I don't usually, um, but let's give it a try. So the principles do have to work together, I've had people ask me, it's a common question, can we do policy governance light? No, you can't, you're either doing the ten principles or you're not, but it's, it's all or nothing, you, they really go hand in hand. They in, they are intertwined. Now, are there other forms of governance? What we call traditional governance, if you do it well, if you do a good job at traditional governance, that might be a policy governance light, because it doesn't follow principles, but it can be efficient and effective if you do it well. Traditional governance often falls apart when you hit an obstacle. One obstacle you may be hitting is four fifty-four. It, it, when, when there's a lot of community input outside of the framework of community input, things can kind of fall apart if you don't have the framework, but if you have a really strong board, it can be done well.
And you don't really know what your framework is of your merged districts.
That's right, that's right, you don't really know, and sometimes even when you are a merged district, you still just don't really know. When you're bringing new people on board and it sounds like you're ha- going through a lot of changes right now or have been and will be, one of the things policy governance does by having a system or framework, um, framework of principles is that you can actually teach that to the folks coming on board and somebody said earlier that somebody pulled out of, uh, a candidacy because they didn't like the way that you did your work. But if you're telling people upfront, just like you did, this is, this is how we do our work, we follow the policy governance model, this is what it means, then you have the ability to have conversations with very different viewpoints in an effective and efficient manner. So, the ten principles are important. First principle is owner accountability, you are accountable to your ownership, who is your ownership? Have you figured that out yet? Real question, who's your ownership? Give it a shot.
Well, I just got married, but.
Congratulations. Remember you've been televised here.
Stakeholders in our community, so, uh, students, uh, parents, um, other community members, taxpayers, um, and, uh, and I, um, and, and the staff, faculty.
Right, and I.
I think staff are stakeholders and not necessarily owners unless they are part of our community. So the, the owners are the people who own our, own our schools, so it's, it's everybody who lives in the communities that our schools serve.
Yep, and I think we determined this at some point, and we had to, we really got in, I remember we were at, um, Braintree and we really got into the weeds about who was a stakeholder, who was an owner, like, was a student a stakeholder or an owner?
Exactly.
So.
So there's a whole list of stakeholders, but they're not all owners.
Right.
I mean, your vendors are stakeholders, they care whether you're open or closed, they don't care quite as much what your result's going to be unless they can sell you something to help you get there, customers, directors, um. So there are a large number of stakeholders, but the ultimate owners fall under that legal and moral ownership, the people who elect you. They're responsible, they put you in the seats to make decisions for them, they are your owners. The other stakeholders you should have input from, but they aren't your owners and your students are actually your beneficiaries. They're receiving what you're giving them. Now, that doesn't mean they don't have voice, we all appreciate student voice, it's very helpful as part of the input, but at the end of the day, what you're doing, you're doing so that your student body achieves the vision that you set out. That's who you're serving, does that make sense? So your owners are really your, your electorate.
And the second part of that word, wasn't it stakeholder accountability, Jeannie?
Yeah.
So that's, the owners are who you're accountable to.
Right.
You're not accountable to the students.
Right.
Or anybody else, it's those people that put you in office, yeah.
It's the owner of accountability. But it's good to know who all your stakeholders are and, um, when you're going out for input, try to get input from all, at least in particular, your staff, your other community members, um, your students as well as the electorate. Any more questions on owner accountability? Okay. All right, the second principle then is the board position. The board leads the organization in service to the owners. So if you looked at this as kind of an accountability chain, you are first elected by your owners and they are electing you to lead this district. You are then leading the district and you are delegating to your CEO, which is your superintendent. Um, policy governance is not just an education governance model, it's actually used in businesses, nonprofits, um, and so CEO is often used as the language, but in our case, that's the superintendent. The superintendent oversees the staff, the superintendent determines what the staff's going to do so that the superintendent can be accountable to you, so that you can be accountable to your owners. So there is, there is a chain there. Questions on that? One of the key things here, and we might touch upon it later on, that, um, I don't know if you've ever experienced, but when you have a new board member, um, this is, this to me is one of the really important principles to explain because one of the key, um, successes of policy governance is the ability for the board to know their responsibility and the superintendent to know their responsibility and really for everyone else in the district to know what that, those lines are. So if the board chooses to talk to staff outside of an input process that's designed, then you're actually circumventing some accountability. The superintendent talking to the owners is usually done to make a connection in the community or alongside the board. And again, the board is the one who's legally responsible to your owners. So does that make sense to? That, that to me was what was eye-opening, was the really clear delineation of roles and responsibilities and what the line is and the fact that the board of directors supervised me. And I then, as superintendent, was responsible for all the staff reporting to me. They weren't reporting to me and to seven board members and to Joe Schmo in the grocery store, they were reporting to the superintendent. Principle three is group authority or board holism. So when you are delegating to your superintendent, you're doing it as the board as a whole, you're speaking as a whole. Generally, that's either through written policy or it's through motions at the board level. In Vermont, um, we have a tendency to be fairly informal in our Robert's rules, um, we're all neighbors, we all live in the community, we all, you know. So somebody over here might say, you know, Michael, I think it'd be really great if you put out a memo on that tomorrow. And maybe it is a really great idea. Michael will decide whether it fits in with his plans unless the board as a whole says, let's take a motion on that, Michael, we as a board would like you to put out a memo about the new bus transportation stuff. See what I mean? Otherwise, Michael could have seven different people giving him demands that never allows him to do his own job, plus a memo on bus transportation is, falls under operations anyway and you would have done it anyway. But it's really important that the board gives direction by speaking as a whole, so that he knows it's really clear what the direction is. If that direction came to him, Michael, it'd be a really great idea if you put out a memo tomorrow and there's nodding around the table and you go on to your next agenda topic, there's no action taking. He doesn't put out a memo tomorrow, he doesn't have enough information, he's going to wait until next Wednesday, whatever reason, he doesn't do it. Has he violated a board directive? No. He took a suggestion, he considered it, he made a decision and he'll act at the time that he thinks is appropriate. But he did not violate a board directive. If the board doesn't understand that, that can start to create some mistrust between the board and the superintendent. Well, we told you, well, no, you didn't, Sally told me and I considered it. See how that can break down if you aren't aware of it. Any other questions on group authority, board holism, issues you faced with that? I'm going to have.
I'm all pretty good about staying in line.
Yeah?
I think so.
Nice.
What do you think, Michael?
You don't have to answer that.
You don't have to put out a memo on about that.
I think that there's some.
You don't have to.
I think that there's some work happening right now with the board and I'm trying to do that privately with individual board members rather than make it a big thing at a board table.
Okay.
But if it reaches a point where it needs to come to the board table, I'll bring it to the board table.
That's a great answer.
I want to come back to that a little bit later on.
I think we even have a policy that says.
That says that.
He has to let us know if somebody's.
If we're out of line.
Out.
So there are two policies that would really help you with this situation. One policy is an executive limitations policy that says the superintendent will notify the board if the board is not following their own policies. And another one is the board will provide education to itself on its own policies. And as you're bringing on yet another new board member and you've got a couple of new ones here, I'm not, I lost count, how many of you are new, but, um.
She's still on here for you?
Yeah, it's at least four, right? I don't know, anyway.
I'm here for over here.
You have a policy that says you will provide education to yourself, ongoing education. So. Okay, let's go to the next policy, ends. The board defines the ends. After you get input from your owners and other stakeholders, the board makes the decision on the ends policy. And the ends policy is written specifically to answer three questions, what is the benefit or outcome? Who are your beneficiaries and what is the worth or priority of that benefit? So if you have decided that your students are your beneficiaries, question for you, is it just students or is it all students? There's a key word in that, in that one. If it's not all students, then you can say you're doing it even though you have twenty percent left behind. Um, so you want to think about that language. So is it students or all students? What is your benefit? I have it later, I guess. I have your actual ends policy there and I wanted to take you through an exercise.
It's in your board packet if you want.
It's in your board packet, I don't think we're going to get to it tonight, but let's do just the beginning piece.
You got it?
Yes, and this is a packet specifically for when we do some training on your ends, but right there you have your current ends, currently written ends.
I also have separate versions of it if you want a printed copy.
Definitely.
Oh, thank you very much.
So in the statement, um, first of all, you're titling it a mission statement. I'm not sure why, it probably started that way when you first, uh, transferred to policy governance perhaps and left it.
No, it happened in what, the transition from Brent to Lane.
To Lane? It's an ends policy, it really is.
It is an ends policy.
Um, so who, who's your beneficiary if you look at your sentence, just the very first page, right up front? The one that starts out with students have the knowledge, skills and tools, yep.
We didn't say all students.
You didn't, no, but you did say students, so to answer your question number two, your students are going to experience this benefit. And your ends policy, question number one, what is the benefit or outcome they're going to experience as a result of going through the Orange Southwest Supervisory District?
They're going to have the knowledge, skills, tools to be prepared for the next stage of their life.
Right, end of, end of phrasing there, right. So you're saying that the students are going to have the knowledge, skills and tools to be prepared for the next stage of their lives. Your board at the time then further defined what those knowledge, skills and tools are on that one point two, sorry about the spacing, one point two, one point one, one point three, one point four. You've claimed that they're going to get critical thinking, foundational knowledge in those academic areas, the ability to adapt and information technology. So you have prioritized those areas as part of that, knowledge, skills and tools. And what's the cost or priority? In according to your end statement? It's right there.
Justify the resources invested by the community.
Yep, so in other words, you're going to do all of this within the budgetary support provided by your community, which means the greater community, I heard you talking S R funds and federal funds if they ever show up and things like that. So within the resources invested, that's how you're going to do this and that's your ends and that's what, currently, that's what you're telling your superintendent, that he has to make his decisions through, that lends. So if he's sitting down at his table, um, with his staff and they're maybe looking at the foundational knowledge or they want to cut out information technology, they need to be able to tell you how they are achieving these things. They need to develop a plan that is going to achieve these things. For a different time, I put on your draft ends policy that I was given and your portrait of a graduate because those are things that should come into play as you work to revise your ends, it's not for discussion, I didn't put it here for discussion now, it's if there's time at the end of the night or at a future session, so. So questions about your current ends policy or how it works or whether it defines everything it's supposed to define? No?
It, well, it does, but part of, part of the reason why we were trying to update it is just because, it hadn't been updated since we, this was what we had on the birthday.
Yeah, and it should be updated, not a particular timeline, but education, for as slow-moving as it is, it also moves quickly.
Yeah.
And things have, you know, you, you should revisit, is this still where your community is? Your community changes, is this still what they think you should prioritize education in the district on? You recently just did an entire portrait of a graduate process, which brought in input from all of your stakeholders. Why would that be different from your ends if your stakeholders have said, these are the things we think are important? So how does that fit into this process? You know, you don't want to have different, this is important, this mission is important, but our portrait of a graduate is also important and they don't exactly line up, that doesn't make sense. So it is because you went through that process alone, it is a good time to revisit your ends, um, going forward.
That was the impetus behind doing the portrait of a graduate was to get feedback so that we could.
Update your ends.
Tweed the, the, the ends a little bit.
So.
We got problems.
Sorry, I wasn't going to get into this a whole lot, but look at your draft ends. Yes, by the.
Can you do a quick question?
Yes.
Portrait of a graduate, who was the overarching background support? Who is the overarching background support behind that? Because it was all over the country. It wasn't just being done here.
Well, except that this district chose to do it. You're right. It's a trend all over the country.
So who's?
Who started the whole national trend?
Yeah.
I'm not sure. In this state, Up for Learning? No. Great Schools Partnership. In this state, Great Schools Partnership brought Portrait of a Graduate in. But you're correct. It did become a trend in the country, and I don't know the origin of that trend. I don't know if you do.
I don't.
Yeah. Yeah. It's, before there was Portrait of a Graduate, there was strategic planning. I mean, there's new names for things along the way and tweaks, et cetera, so. But what's nice about Portrait of a Graduate is that it does bring in many, many voices. So if you looked at your draft ends and you looked at those three questions up there, I'd like you to do a little critical thinking. Does your draft ends identify who is going to be the recipient? Who's the beneficiary?
I mean, I think we would shift individual to student.
Okay. So individual is the recipient, so it's shifted to student. Probably be the closest place to do it. I agree. And so it's kind of almost written backwards. And what is the benefit or outcome?
1.1 through 1.3.
Those are the sub-benefits, that's correct. What's the broader language over those?
Maximizing students' potential is the outcome.
Look at, look at create inclusive, academically rigorous schools. So here, you're making a vision where you're creating schools that are inclusive and academically rigorous and focus on, as Ryan mentioned, rigorous academic foundation, personal development, self-care, community engagement, and global citizenship. And then you use the resources, again, invested by the community. It's just written in reverse. Usually, it's written the other direction. But it's a little shaky on the who. Each individual student's potential would be much more helpful if you went in this direction. Because otherwise, is it every individual who's in the school system?
Jeannie, would you, would you also make any connection between the student and what you're trying, like in the first one, it's the students are going to have the knowledge, skills, and tools.
Right.
Versus here, we're creating
Yes.
an inclusive environment. It doesn't actually, it's not actually the student that we're measuring.
It talks about what OSSD is going to be doing. This is actually more of a mission statement. A mission statement is more, why does OSSD exist? It exists to create the resources, using the resources invested by the community to create inclusive academic, blah, blah, blah. Whereas an end statement, you generally start with a beneficiary. What is the beneficiary going to receive? Who is the beneficiary? And what are they gonna receive? And then you often have to break it down further. If I were superintendent trying to make decisions between these two policies, I would have an easier time when you went down to the 1.1, 1.4 than the draft ends, 1.1 to 1.3. They're vague. I would want you to go further. A little bit further. There's a little too big.
Are you referring to the rigorous academic foundation, personal development?
Yeah.
I don't care.
Yeah. So for example, rigorous academic foundation. Your superintendent could say, we're gonna do reading and math all day long. That's it. Well, those are academic. That's a, that can be a rigorous foundation. But your community is really interested in the arts or in critical thinking or in life skills, you know, other things.
I thought when we drafted these, we did have, yeah, when we had, when we had these outlined.
I just didn't receive them. I'm sorry. So maybe they are. That's good. I'm really glad to hear that.
This was the most up-to-date draft that Hannah had.
So they've been lost if you had them?
No.
I mean, we have them documented. I, we definitely.
I've got them. I just, I didn't bring them on my computer.
I don't have it on.
That's okay. So your ends, again, in principle four, you are, after input from your owners and your stakeholders, you are deciding who your recipients are, your beneficiaries, and what they're receiving by attending Orange Southwest Supervisory District and at what cost or priority of that benefit.
Yeah. So I kind of like the overarching statement from 2016. And I know some folks felt that was, we needed to change that, but I kinda liked that. But what needed to be fleshed out a little bit more is the understuff that we did when we met as a group with all the.
And maybe that understuff, since I don't see it, maybe that included what's in the Portrait of a Graduate.
It did.
Because as I see it, as I look at what's in front of me, there's no connection between Portrait of a Graduate, which clearly were directions from your owners
Yeah.
in what you were thinking of for a statement. So how might you change around your end statement then to make it more of an end statement?
Well, I was, I'm lazy, so I was just gonna, I was just thinking, all students have the knowledge, skills, and tools to be prepared for the next stages, stage of their lives, which justify the resources invested by the community. And then
Which are really awkwardly.
go with the, with the things that we had kind of fleshed out from Portrait of the Graduate, which sort of the focus on the old ones, that's what, in my view, were, needed some updating versus the overarching statement, that broad statement. And I know it, I know it doesn't sound, that was the difficulty that the board had was it doesn't sound very nice.
You mean the broad statement? You don't think it sounds very?
Yeah, the ends, the ends statements kind of sound kind of funky because of the structure that policy governance requires. But I thought I read somewhere that you can have a mission statement somewhere else like this one, which, which sounds very nice.
As long as it's aligned with your end statement, yep.
Right. Which this one would be.
Yeah, I think it could be.
Oh, why bother?
Type of school.
Yeah.
What's the benefit?
Yeah. If you had a mission statement, yeah, I agree. I mean, basically, what the mission statement does is it turns around the end statement, says what OSSD is going to do. Whereas the end statement is what the student will receive. So you don't really need both. But if you really want one, and it might be a pithy tagline.
I'd rather be concise and have it in one place, so it's cool.
It seems like the mission statement is more for the operation to execute the ends.
Excellent. Good, yes, very good.
I always think of the mission statement as the how to do something.
Yep, operations.
Yeah, so why would that necessarily be up to the board?
Yeah.
It isn't necessarily, and I'm not really here to advocate for a mission statement. The question is, can you have both? You can. And, but what the board should be working on is the ends. And the mission statement should, if you're going to have one, should then align with the ends.
The mission statement should be simple, to achieve the ends.
Exactly.
Right? That's what the mission, that's what you, so you're defining the ends because the mission really is, what am I in business for?
Yeah.
And I'm in business to achieve the ends that you identify. That's, so that's why it feels like it's a repeat of the ends.
Yeah.
And then the vision tells you what it looks like when you accomplish it. Right? Which also ties very nicely into the ends in the Portrait of a Graduate work. Because essentially, what you have done is you've gone through the ends work by saying, what, what do the stake, what do the owners want? And the owners want the Portrait of a Graduate work. So you're seeing how these things are intertwined and tangled. And really, where you're trying, where I think you're probably trying to move is end statements that align to the Portrait of a Graduate work.
Where, yes. I think that was well said. Where are you with revising your ends? I see a draft. I don't see the whole draft.
Which is, right. And then we paused because there were, we had like budget and
Yes, that always happens.
other things going on.
So you're ready to come back to it.
Yeah.
But one thing, I understand that like the order is out, but I guess one thing that I'm thinking about here with the way that this is drafted is that this piece about the like, the way the schools are that I understand is not like a student end. These were things that were reflecting Portrait of a Graduate and the things that our community said that they wanted. And we struggled with, you know, like what, you know, do we say like, students feel included or like, like, so, and that was how we ended up on this, create inclusive, academically rigorous schools. I think that was a struggle.
And for some reason, suggested draft update, the next page, I actually don't agree with what I just wrote in here as the draft update. I still think students, what if it was something more like, students will participate in schools that are inclusive, academically rigorous, and maximize each student's potential with the core focus? Do you see kind of the difference?
That's about the school, though. It's not about the student.
Right.
And so if I create the school
Right.
that does those things, but kids don't learn anything.
Right.
I am not accomplishing what
Right, you're right.
He's good, he's good.
What your owners want. What your owners want is engaged lifelong learners, problem solvers, critical thinkers, effective communicators, resilient, healthy, and self-directed, caring, connected, community member, life skills and technical skills.
And those things are knowledge, skills, and tools to be prepared for the next stage of their life. The reason you want them to have those list of things is because you want them to be successful adults, right?
So Rachel's saying something over here that's really important and I know this wasn't the direction that you were headed to go, but it seems like we're headed that way.
Let's go with it.
So say that, say what you just said again.
That's like engineering human beings. Schools don't do that. Like.
So your role as a board, like I'm a lot more talkative this time around than when we were doing this in August, right? So your role as a board is to decide which of those schools are responsible for. So the community came out and said, here's what we want you to do, school. Your job, part of your job is to say, okay, but wait a minute. What part of that is really school's role? Or how much of that? What does it look like?
Versus what part of it is a benefit the students will gain by attending your schools? And the ends focuses on the students and the benefit outcome for those students.
And I think that's the key piece. When you get into doing this work, when we get back into doing this work, this time around when I'm there with you, I'm gonna keep pushing you every single time to say, you're talking about the school again. I don't really care what the school looks like or how the school goes. And I don't think you really do either. But if you do, that's an important end for me to understand. If you want all the walls to be blue and that's something that you think should happen,
It is a soothing color.
then we should. We can get, we can get maintenance out there to do that, right? But the reality here is what you're really in the role of as a board, as the representatives of the owners, is to say, what do we want the beneficiaries
To receive.
to receive. And so I guess maybe you could say that the community is a beneficiary of the buildings in some ways. But when I sat there with you earlier this year, I think they could do that, but I don't think that's what they want to do. I don't think that's where they're, I don't think that's where they're thinking. So every time that you say the school should be this or the school should be that, you're going down a path that's not helpful because where you really wanna be is, why do you think the school should be that way? Because you're thinking that if the school's that way, then the student will accomplish something else. It's not really what the school is like that you're looking for. It's what do you want the students to experience? And I think really, when I come back to it, it's going back to the initial mission statement is what knowledge, skills, and tools do you want kids to have?
What's the difference between skills and tools in this term?
Yeah. I can't answer that.
Let's take one of those out there.
Yeah, you could. You could. Because if you have skills, then you generally have tools to use those skills.
Right, right. When I actually hitting them the wrench to go, to go home with.
We usually talk about knowledge and skills as the two, like, in goals in education.
Yeah, what I would look at is what do you want kids to know, understand, and be able to do? Right?
Yeah.
Am I going back to before work with that maybe?
Yeah. Which is knowledge and skills, still, to be prepared.
Jeannie, can I insert a word that we use in our guidelines is attributes? So that the schools are empowered with the knowledge, skills, and attributes needed to be successful contributing members. So that's how we captured that third, more nebulous category.
Almost like characteristics, like, yeah.
Attributes.
I like that one.
Just looked up where, where Portrait of a Graduate came from. It's a company in Ohio.
Okay.
Called Batel for Kids.
Oh, that's right.
It looks like that's where it came from. And they use attributes on their website.
I believe that's right, yeah. So I do think it's worthwhile, you coming back to this. And you just did a whole bunch of work in just like 10 minutes that I think moved you further along. Do you feel that you wanna put out a draft that you can come back to and and have Michael or me pull together for you and you can come back and visit it? and have Michael or me pull together for you and you can come back and visit it so you aren't repeating this discussion? Would it be okay if we took this information?
That would be great.
And run that, I would like that idea. Like I volunteered for that, but not really.
I move, I think you and I both have it already.
We will get you with all of the points.
Yeah, 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 we'll connect.
Yeah, I, I, I'm pretty sure I have it if you can.
I know, I know that I just, I have things, I don't, I can't access it right now on this device unless I set a bunch of things up, but yeah, I can't do that.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah, sure.
I think it'll move you forward and I think you kind of ended up in a place you were kind of stuck maybe. And the conversation you just had feels like it's already moved you forward. So why go back and relive it?
Sounds great.
Go with it. Okay.
So I move that we have Michael work with
Well done.
Jeannie, you take the information we've just talked about and create a draft and statement.
All second, all in favor?
Oh, what the?
Discussion.
Oh, discussion.
Yes.
Well, we kind of did the discussion.
Do you wanna have the discussion kind of there?
No, I don't have any discussion point in here, but I let my minute taker go because you were doing a training, you weren't doing board business.
Oh, right.
Oh, that's, that's true.
So can we not do that?
You can.
You can, I'm taking minutes here, so.
And we're recording.
Rachel and Ann.
Recording, so.
Rachel and Ann. And I, I'll get the language close enough, or do you wanna tell me exactly what you want the language to be?
That's fine, no, it's, it's close enough, it's close enough.
Okay.
We'll see the minutes and if I really don't like what you wrote, then I'll.
Then you'll tell me I got it wrong, and that's fine.
Bring back the.
Okay.
Okay.
Did you vote?
Yes, we did, it was you and Ann.
Okay.
Alright, oh, I didn't wanna do that.
Ooh, look at that.
Yeah, it's down there somewhere, no, it's down there somewhere, up there somewhere. You got back to it, how'd you get back to it?
I have to reopen everything.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay, here you go. What's this circle thing down on the bottom right?
This is it.
No, the other one way over at the far right. That one? Oh, no, don't do that. Alright. Sorry about that.
Alright, we're gonna do two things here.
Yeah, you wanna get your Google Meet back up?
Just let me get back there this way. And we're still recording. And then interruptions. Here, one piece of mail. Will you type your name?
Yeah.
When it comes in.
Thank you. Ready?
Yep.
That's good. Yep.
Just hit enter.
Oh, sorry.
There's PowerPoint. Here we go. And then we're gonna open it with
Google Slides. Alright, thank you.
And then we're gonna go back to Got it. We're gonna go to view.
When I went to change the slide, it wouldn't change, that's what caused all this, so.
And then we're gonna view the slideshow.
Next time if it doesn't, okay, we'll get there.
No, we gotta hit escape for a second, because I gotta be sharing the slideshow before we share.
Are you related to the log?
No. No, he spells it without an E at the end. I'm, I'm married to the other former superintendent in the state named Dewey, but Rusty names, spells his name differently.
And then we're back to here, and now we're gonna open it with slide. And we're going to view.
Think you're double open, if you wanna be on your next tab over.
Yeah, you're already double open.
Okay. This is the one I've got, huh?
Yeah, no, I'm here, yep.
Alright. So that was ends, so now we're on principle five. The board means. So principle five sets out how the board will operate and behave and how it will connect with operations. It's another one of the four policy areas. I created that circle to show that there's governance process up on the top left and board management delegation on the bottom left, those are the board sides of your policies. The ends and the executive limitations are the two quadrants on the right-hand side. So this, the board defines in writing through policy, its job results, its practices, its delegation style, discipline that makes up its own job, it decides what committees it's gonna have, if any, what responsibilities those committees are, what its officers are going to look like, what structure they're going to use for officers, what governing style it's gonna use and how it's gonna behave. And these are all called board means decisions, and these are common on the left-hand side, common board policies. So your governing style, how your agendas are planned, how items are added to your agenda, what your chair's role is, how you're gonna behave, et cetera. The other one which we will get to later is board management delegation policies, which again is how you're going to connect with your superintendent. What's your relationship with the superintendent going to be? Unity of control, we've already talked about, what's the accountability, how are you gonna delegate and how are you gonna monitor the superintendent performance? Questions on any of board means? Do you guys do committees? Principle six is executive limitations. This is on the right-hand side of that circle. This is your superintendent's job, you, the board, are telling the superintendent in writing your expectations about the operational organization. But you're not telling him what to do, which takes away his accountability because then he can only do what you say and basically you've made the decision. Instead, you're defining limits, you're prescribing instead of prescribing so that those policies say, you can do anything you need to do to achieve what we're saying as long as you're within these limits. You cannot go outside these limits and we're defining these limits generally around the areas of liability, risk, illegality, not illegality, legality. Yeah, ethic, ethical, sorry. I'm not in sync with all of my adjectives there, but you get the idea. So you're defining, we are, we will accept your decision as long as you are following these limits. And then you get even more specific about what those limits are, like how are you gonna treat students? How are you gonna treat parents? How are you gonna treat staff? How are you going to treat our facilities? How are you gonna do, handle our finances? These are all the areas that we really, and how are you gonna communicate to the board and support the work of the board? These are all the areas that we, the board, are telling you, the superintendent, these are the areas that you need to live within. And that, that section is extremely effective in helping the superintendent know where they can go and what they can do. If you were to tell the superintendent exactly how to do each one of those things, their hands would be tied if COVID hits, if the federal government decides not to pay funds, if, I mean, there are just a number of ways where situations you can't possibly think of that occur and you didn't write those down, so what's he supposed to do now? Instead, you wrote down, you have to live within the laws.
Jeannie, as I look at this, what I see it saying is, it's not telling the superintendent where I can go, it's telling me where I can't go. And I can go anywhere except the places that I can't go.
Anywhere within those places, yep, within that boundary.
So you know, I think that's what you're, when you're looking at, when you're looking at your executive limitations, that's what you have to look at, that's how you get to shape the direction that you want things to go. Every board that I've ever worked with, my goal was to guess what I can and can't do, right?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, what, what was the difference for you coming here?
So that's it, I had to, I had to
And early conversations, yeah.
Right, I had to mind read what different boards wanted and we had to have a conversations,
Different board members even.
Right, and what they didn't want. So you tell me what you want because you put the ends in front of me and said, accomplish this. And then you put the executive limitations in front of me and said, but you can't accomplish this by doing any of these things. And so as long as I was moving towards accomplishing what you wanted me to accomplish and I wasn't doing any of those other things, then the place where you're at is, hey, he's doing what the board has asked him to do. And if you want me to do something different, so if I'm doing something in a way that you don't want it to be done, then what you have to do as a board is come together and say, wait a second, we're gonna put in, we're gonna put an executive limitation in, in here. Or you gotta get more clear on the ends and say, wait a minute, what you're saying, you're accomplishing, how you're accomplishing that end? That's not really what we thought the end was, so then you gotta get cleaner on your end language.
And we'll talk a little bit about that, a little bit about reasonable interpretation. But that was really good, thank you. And when I think about executive limitations, I think about an example of a simple example of telling my admin assistant that I wanna throw a party next week, could she please arrange it? That's like the most global way that I, I could say it. So she goes out and she gets cocktails and cheese and crackers and I said, oh, but this is a children's party. I hadn't told her that, so she didn't know, you know, so underneath it I had to say, I'd like you to throw a party, prepare a party for next week. I'd like it to be for grade four, I'd like it to focus on their literacy topic, I'd like to invite the parents, I'd like, you know, here's now those, those pieces underneath that now she knows how to prepare this party and you don't have parents saying, why are you giving my 10-year-old cocktails? So this is, again, I'm not, you know, this is where you're, you're defining what areas are not okay. And those policies are for the superintendent. These are the areas of the policies, your executive limitation policies almost always starts with that global statement at the top. And then it covers those particular areas. I think it's communication support to the board where it says the superintendent shall let the board know if they're not following. I think it's one of those sub-policies. The superintendent's job then are the ends and executive limitations coming together. If they, he now knows his job description and if he's working towards the ends and he's compliant with the reasonable interpretation of the executive limitations, then he's doing his job. If something comes up that you weren't, that you're now concerned about, you go to your policies and say, where is this covered? And then you can explore the performance by knowing what your policies are and investigating them further. So a common one is you might have a superintendent who retaliates against staff. Well, you have an executive limitation on treatment of staff. And it says that all of his decisions must be, it must be really clear to staff what their job descriptions are, it must, there must be contracts or personnel manuals in place. If those things are happening, you know, then, and, then you can explore further through focus group or on, on external audit or a board direct inspection, you can still get at that if that's a concern to you.
Wait a minute.
Yeah.
So I'm on that treatment of, oh, I'm on the wrong one, I'm on treatment of students' parents, because they're very similar.
Or staff.
Operate without, so ours is
Probably short for staff.
Yeah, it doesn't have that arbitrary, it just says operate without written rules.
So you're not, he's not gonna operate without written rules or personnel manual or contract.
So an example, Ann, would be when the contract didn't talk really about how to do a RIF, how, what the RIF process looked like. And so I created that document that said, here's how we're gonna go through the RIF process and I chose to work with the association to say, does this seem like it makes sense to you? So that I had other eyes and then came back and said, okay, here are the written rules and I have staff by.
And now he has written rules and he can't, so if somebody comes to you and says, well, he just let go my position because he doesn't like me. If he go back and show you that he has created those written rules, he's not doing a process that doesn't have
Clear.
Clear.
Expectation.
Yeah.
But you said something about if the board wasn't happy, they could go do a focus
Yeah, I'd like to come back to, yeah, I know, I'd like to come back to that later, I went a little bit far on that.
Okay.
I did, you can, I just went a little bit far in this particular example.
Okay.
Yeah, so the ends and the executive limitations together make the superintendent job description. Principle seven is policy sizes. Go back to my example of the party that Mike wants to throw next week. Policies are written from broad to specific, if he wants to have a party. And then the lower level policies do not introduce new ideas, they just clarify what you meant by the original idea. So back at your original, your current mission statement slash ends, broadly, you said students will have the knowledge, skills and tools to be prepared for the next stage of their lives, but that is so broad. You know, if he were interpreting that for you, he could say, well, I really feel like welding is an important school skill that every first grader, oh, there you go. He probably would say that, that every first grader should have. So you went further and said, these are the areas, so you, you defined it further and that's what it's up to you as the board to start at the broadest level, most inclusive, and then further define in descending levels of detail until you feel that you have reached a level willing to accept any reasonable interpretation your superintendent will make. And if along the way you determine that you can't, if, if along the way you determine that maybe the interpretation was reasonable, but it wasn't what you wanted, then you need to go back to your policy and make sure it's clarified at the appropriate level, you might need to add a level.
Policy sizes is on the left side of the house?
Creation of policies is part of the board job description, yep, you are responsible for writing all the policies because you are giving the direction to both yourselves and to your superintendent.
My role in that is to create the procedure that impacts the policy.
He does the how. Still with me? You only have three more to go. Any questions yet? Principle eight, delegation clarity. Superintendent is the sole connection between the board and operations, in your case, staff. You are telling the superintendent what to do. The superintendent then needs to delegate to his staff in order for the superintendent to meet what you are telling him to do.
And it's you as a board.
And it's you as a board, so you're talking with the superintendent. This is an area, when Debbie went on the Barstow Board and I was second-year superintendent, I think, in Rutland Northeast. This was an obvious area that had broken down in that board and at budget time in particular, it was very difficult for the board to make budget decisions because the communication was direct staff to board, parent to board, not even principal or superintendent and yet you had, they had, they hadn't, this is why they went to policy governance. But ideally you have told the superintendent, here's the ends, here, here's how you need to meet it. And so suddenly asking, he, he may go to staff and parents, it's very appropriate if he goes to staff and parents and say, how would you suggest we reach these ends with the resources we have? He might wanna do that. But for you to do that, you have now taken that task away from him. He's no longer accountable for it, you're gonna have to figure it out. And that kinda can break things down. Gets very confusing for the staff and the community in particular. And that's when you start to see turnover in staff. Okay, I mentioned earlier, any reasonable interpretation, once you have written your policies and you've written them to the level that you think is very clear, however many levels that takes, the superintendent is accountable for compliance with those policies. He needs to reasonably interpret the policy, give you a rationale for that interpretation and then give you evidence of compliance or tell you where he's not in compliance. Did you have one this year where you had to say that you didn't find?
I did.
Yeah, and so I thought, I had to too when I was at Rutland Northeast, where there just wasn't, RIF process could be a good example, where there just wasn't a, there wasn't a process in place that kept you in compliance. These are the monitoring reports that he gives you. And we changed that format this year, working together, so that it's, it's suppose, it's hopefully much more succinct, gives the interpretation, gives the rationale, if you wanna dig deeper, those references are there, but it's not, you know, 25 pages of reading. And then very clear, this is what it would look like to be in compliance, this is the evidence that we are in compliance or not in compliance, and if not, this is when I expect to be in compliance. The board, superintendent's accountable for the ends and executive limitations. The board is actually accountable for the board governance and the board management delegation. But you don't have to write reports like this, you just need discussion touching base once in a while. He, your employee, has to write reports like this. And the board needs to look at them and the board doesn't approve them, the board accepts them. If the board doesn't choose to accept them because either you don't agree that the interpretation is reasonable or you don't agree that there is adequate evidence of compliance, those would be the two reasons to not accept it. Again, if his, if his interpretation is reasonable, but it's not what you thought you meant, then that's on you, not him, and you go back and clarify your policy further so that it more reflects what you intended to mean. I actually really love this principle. It just takes away so much gray area for me, or identifies the gray area so we can figure it out. Okay, last principle. Monitoring report itself, and I just really spoke about that, so I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on that. Those are the 10 principles, they all work together. Are there any questions after going through the accelerator? Your annual evaluation comes right out of the monitoring reports. Which also makes things much more much more clear as well, it's not a gotcha evaluation. It's, this is what we told you to do, are you doing it, yes or no?
So the areas that I struggle with are, we've delegated the superintendent to run the district. But then there are all these things that seem to come up from, like state law says the board has to do this. And I'm like, well, we delegated that, can we, is it okay for us to, to legally delegate that to him?
Yes and no. So you're correct, there are mostly state, sometimes federal activities that says the board must act on this.
Like this evening.
Yeah.
The appeal.
Yeah, very honestly. The request, yeah.
The request, right.
That's a good one. Other things are like the board has to agree to the assurances in the federal grant, that is 30 pages long, you're not gonna read it. He's the one who has to make sure that you're complying with the federal grant, but the board has to act on it, saying yes. Or the hiring of certified staff. Vermont says that the board will hire certified staff, but you're not gonna go out and interview everybody and make that decision, you're a volunteer board. That's what you hired him for, so he brings recommendation you hire. Approving your own minutes is another one. Do you use a consent agenda?
Yeah.
So the consent agenda is a good tool, most of the time for that, today might not have worked on consent agenda. If you had said, Michael will make the decision and you'll vet it, then that's consent agenda. There are just some things that, that somebody somewhere put into law that says the board must There are just some things that that somebody somewhere put into law that says the board must act on. And the consent agenda is a good tool to use for that. You don't have to relive all, and you can ask, even with consent agenda, you can ask for more information. Let's have a discussion about this. Let's take this one off the consent agenda. Talk about it. But yeah, you can't get out of those things.
Yeah, I know. When this first came up, I was like, ah, isn't there a way, isn't he have to do?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, if you read title sixteen too, it's, it's, you could tell who was writing it. There's just, I don't know, there's just a lot in there that says the board must, the board must, the board must. But sometimes the way the board gets it done is by hiring somebody to do it. And then the board just acts on it.
When, and should we be having him sort of write some sort of, or show, you know, this is, you know, the you're approving this because this state law or whatever says the board must approve it.
Yeah.
Is what I've done, or do we need, do we?
Well, I don't know if you write communications to the board, notes to the board for every board meeting? Some superintendent report.
He does a superintendent report, yeah.
Superintendent report. So often in there, I would write, for example, in my case, I'm a believer that because of my training with attorney Steve Lego, or Steve, Steve.
Stitzel.
Stitzel. That policies don't go on consent agendas, they are actually action items. There are some attorneys who don't agree with that, but I went back conservatively. But still, I've done the policy. I've gone to V S B A. I've gotten the draft policy. I know what's legally approved language for that policy. You don't need to spend hours necessarily in that policy, but you do have to take action on it. So I'll put it on the board agenda and I'll say, this policy has been updated by the legislature. Here's a reference to the law. Here's a reference to the V S B A attorney approved version. I recommend that you approve this policy, something like that, or something else that's, you know, whatever else is on on consent agenda. Background information.
So would that go in your consent agenda, or would that go under policy decisions in your, in your meeting?
Which, with which?
The, when you have one of those V S B A required policies that the board has to approve.
Steve Stitzel recommends that they, that policy should be acted on individually, so therefore not consent agenda.
Just as you do it now.
Okay, so, yeah, so in that policy.
Yeah. There are some attorneys in Vermont who will say, no, go ahead and do consent agenda.
So I think Anne, sometimes there's this, there's this piece where boards do things because they can do it or they think they can do it. And sometimes it's just easier and less time consuming and lets us focus the work on where we want to be doing. So like I'd be in, I'd be in Steve's cap and just say, hey, isn't it just as easy for the, we didn't, right?
We may have taken a class together. Okay.
And we didn't, the, the reality would be, you just do it separate because nobody can argue with doing it separate. They could argue with you putting it on the consent agenda. You know, the reality, even something like tonight, you probably could have told me, you make the decision, Michael, as the acting chair. And away you go. And I would have said to you, Anne, I'll do that because that's the will of the, if that's the will of the board. And.
And it's gonna be challenged.
The reality of it is, that'll come back to bite you.
Uh huh, yeah. So yes, so in his superintendent's report, to some extent, he should explain what it is you're looking at and why, why you're legally having to look at it. Give some background information on it. Tuition. You talked about tuition tonight in the sense of how do you make a, what's setting next year's tuition rate. That's gonna go on your January consent agenda. He's gonna say, according to the formula, our tuition rate should be, and I need you to approve it.
Right. And that one, I'm gonna let you prove on a consent agenda.
Cause it's super.
Because nobody's gonna come back and argue with you about it.
You can't change it. And they can't change it. It's formula driven. It's, it is what is.
Yeah, right.
So much for local control.
Your local control comes back to the ends and what do you think the school district?
And the limitations.
And the limitations. And what do you think your community, you are designing the future of your community with input. That's where you want to spend your time. You don't want to spend your time on this silly stuff that Michael has to do. Which is an awful lot of administrative. So that's an overview of all of the, of the ten principles. This is a separate topic. It's why it's a different color. Checking in with you, seven fifteen. Yeah, you wanna take a bathroom, dessert, water break? And then we're gonna try a policy rehearsal and then I think we're probably one or two and then we're gonna stop. Does that sound good? Get up, stretch your legs. This is why I didn't want you to wait until after the first section to have your dinner.
I knew the first section would be longest.
I guess I could have waited for, for desserts. You could have waited for the break for dessert.
English.
Why bother?
No, I'm not.
Which one did you get?
Debbie, would you like any food?
I'm gonna grab something.
What was the white, what was the white one? That's what it tasted like, but I'm pretty sure.
Chini, can I get you something?
I'll look and see.
Very good, side by side also.
Oh.
Your description.
There's plenty more, so.
Good to like, well, I had this hot pot still.
Your description is really good.
Yeah, yeah, it was.
It would just make sense to just.
Yeah, I usually put more time in my schedule.
Thanks for going there.
Yeah, I'll tell, I'll tell you more.
All right.
I were still.
Just not that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Your wife.
We're still staying with my parents, so I have no kitchen.
Yep.
Uh, oh, thank you.
I'm not sure which of these two are mine. I know the other two are different, but I'm collecting others and I'm gonna take yours. I know when Michael sent out, we should just get pizza. I was like, I couldn't do that. He said I was the only one.
I love pie. Yeah, I am. I cannot have pizza for dinner anymore.
Pizza?
Uh huh, yeah, I tasted all night.
Because you don't have a kitchen and.
Well, no, because I had, yeah, it gives me a terrible heartburn.
Oh.
Oh.
Yeah, so.
Do you think acid, dairy, both?
Um, I think it's the like lethal combination of dairy gluten and very acidic tomato sauce, yeah.
Yeah, that'll do it.
So.
What about if it's not a tomato pizza?
That's usually actually what I, I have like, when they, when we make pizza at home, I usually just put veggies on top.
What if it's a pecked up pizza?
I, I mean, when I make pizza at home, I don't use anywhere near the amount of cheese that you get at a restaurant.
You don't need to, right?
No.
You don't need to hide any flavors.
No. Yeah. Probably. Well, or even like, you know, I was looking up, I was trying, you know, we had during like asparagus season and I was like, oh, like let me look at this recipe for.
At least somewhere you recorded it, of course we are, and I'm here talking about restaurants.
And when I, like even when I look up like recipes for pizzas where I'm just getting ideas for topping combinations and I see the amount of cheese they say they use, it's way more than.
We're swapping pizza recipes.
You talk about pizza recipes all you want. Somebody might take your recommendations.
Asparagus pizza.
I was, well, I was like, we have an asparagus bed now, so I was like, ooh.
How was yours doing?
Uh, it was like neglected for a few years, so.
So that probably means it dropped a lot of seed, right?
It seems pretty robust, actually.
Cool, that's exciting.
Yeah.
We planted crowns and we were hoping that maybe this year, cause this is your three. And with crowns, we heard that you were supposed to be able to maybe harvest by year three, but it's growing, but it wasn't, we weren't, we didn't feel comfortable cutting any of them down.
Yeah, it's pretty well established. I mean, I think the bed's twenty years.
Oh, wow.
Maybe, maybe older.
That's awesome, yeah.
Yeah.
I love asparagus.
There's some serious burnout growing in there, so.
Is that, is that pretty invasive then, or?
No, it's just prolific.
Okay, we have a, we have a horseradish problem in our garden.
That's not a problem.
There are worse prob- there are worse problems to have.
Somebody rototilled it.
Oh.
So we have horseradish everywhere and it's like encroaching on the blueberry bushes and.
That could be a problem. I could see how that would be a problem.
Apparently you're, you can like kill it off by staying on top of the greens, but I don't know, we barely, we barely have time for the perennials that are in our garden, so. It all takes time. Yeah. We have children. Mine have not, have not really done the, do the gardening thing.
My, one of my children lives in the garden right now. She goes to camp at Chandler and then she comes home and she spends hours in the garden with my father.
Oh, that's cool, that's awesome.
Yeah, she, she planted like twenty-four tomato plants for him and she's.
Wow.
In it. She wants to get a big sun hat. My father has this like huge straw sun hat. And she's like, I think I really need a straw sun hat. It makes you a better gardener.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I think so. I think so.
I think so.
That's great.
Yeah. The other one that cuts into his reading time.
I mean, this is like, I say the, the garden as if I do much with it. I cook with the things that come out of it, Nick does like most of the gardening. I tell them, I'm really happy you wanna have a garden. I'm not gonna take time away from cycling to do this though. So like, if you wanna do this, this is your project. I'm grateful for it, but. Yeah. You only have so much free time.
That is true.
So I understand choosing reading was all I meant.
Yeah, yeah, and he would choose reading over breathing, I think, if he was given the option, so. Like, we had to make him know books at the dinner table, which is like a terrible rule to make as a parent.
No, that was me as a kid too. It's a good, it's a good life lesson.
Yeah, you have to eat and talk to other people sometimes.
Bees are doing good.
Right.
I was gonna ask, Amanda said that she went up and visited your bees. And was saying.
Oh, yeah.
Or him.
How long have you been beekeeping?
I saw you last year with your bees. So this is your one. They're good.
Thanks, right? Okay.
Cool. You have a fair number of hives, huh?
Yeah, we have twelve. We had two last year. This is great. We love it. It's going well. Do ten more.
So you're really like exponential growth on your business plan with the bees, yeah?
Don't do anything too small.
I mean, it's high, same problems.
Oh boy, I, when I had two. All year long.
They were wintered okay for you?
But it was alright because.
Alright, I know you guys are really tired. So maybe we'll do something that's a little bit more fun next. And one of the things that boards often do is to build policy rehearsals into your board meeting. Ten minutes, that's all it should be. And what it does, it does a number of different things. It makes you familiar with your policies. Unlike those big policy manuals with all those state and federal and even local policies that are written and they go on a shelf and you expect Michael to know them. Your policy manual for policy governance really is the way you expect things to be done and you expect yourselves to act. So therefore, when you're facing a situation, if you are, if you have your policy manual either on your phone or on paper at the board meeting, you could call it up and you could use this policy scenario as a way of utilizing your policies. So it keeps you focused in the right way. It also provides professional development for you as a board and particularly your new board members. And even for the community who's watching. They understand why you're going through the process you're going through. Debbie is a real pro at this. Barstow would do this very well. So I'm gonna give you, this is a real one that Debbie and I did together. This was a real situation at Barstow. And I'm gonna give you a, a scenario. I titled it, whose problem is this? So at a board meeting, a number of teachers and the association leader came to the board meeting and spoke in public session about the high incidence of bees in one classroom. The message was that they gave was that the board does not care about their teachers by allowing them to teach in a setting that is not safe. Okay? Well, you can't laugh when they're sitting there. So we're all, we all wanna make a difference as board members, right? So the reason I brought this up is the first time this happened, the board started problem solving. Well, maybe we could, you know, we could call this guy. I know Johnny down the road, he, he like raises bees, he could come and collect them or maybe, you know, and, and I had to pull out the, guys, whose job is this? Whose problem is this? So what we did is we created guiding questions for the policy rehearsal. So given that situation, is there anything the board has already said in its policy manual about whose job is this? Is it executive limitations, board management delegation, governance process, governing style? Could you put up another tab? I'd like to put up your policy manual.
Yes.
Actually, I can do that. I don't need you to do that. I just don't wanna shut everything down again. Okay. Just talk to Michael about that.
We'll do tape.
It drives really funny, doesn't it?
Yeah, it does. So.
You know where I?
Under the board governance policies.
Towards the bottom.
Oh, I see him. Thank you. All right. So here are your policies. Here's your executive limitations ones. Is there anything in there that might affect bees in the classroom?
I'm, you know, I'm looking for.
Treatment of staff.
Asset protection.
Right. I was looking for something regarding facilities, but it didn't look like there was anything about facilities much.
Yeah. So kind of dig in a little bit deeper. Treatment of staff. Talks about operating facilities without appropriate accessibility and privacy.
That's treatment of students.
Oh, that's stu-, well, that's, okay, but.
I suppose that could be students too, students and staff.
Could be, their staff. Um, allow staff to be unprepared for emergency situations. So I don't see anything really strong there, but let's keep going. It's not necessarily your financial conditions. Um, two point O, by the way, just your global policy. Does talk about, you won't allow any practice activity decision that is unsafe. That's one of the things you have. So there's one area that it's already in executive limitations. Let's go back down to where we were. Financial, superintendent succession and asset protection. So will not cause or allow assets to be unprotected, inadequately maintained, could potentially be it. Subject or insufficient maintenance could intentionally be it. Unnecessarily expose the organization, board and staff to claims of liability. So you have a few different areas that indicate that this is a superintendent's job because it falls under the executive limitations. Whereas the board side of things, it's not under ends. You don't say anything in your ends about bees.
No bees.
But, sorry, I don't mean to make anybody dizzy here. But here's the board stuff. Is there anything in here, in your board management delegation or in your governing style, we can go into the policies if you want, that would indicate that the board should be doing something about the bees?
Nope.
I agree. I agree. So. Where's the actual slideshow? This one?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, so the board has already said things in its policy manual under executive limitations. Therefore, according to your policies, does this refer to something that should be delegated to the superintendent?
Yes.
Okay.
So that doesn't mean that Ryan can't go and tell.
Oh, absolutely.
Hey, I know how to take care of it.
Absolutely.
I can, I can refer you to a great beekeeper.
My, my son-in-law's a beekeeper. The school down the road did call him to come and take some away.
But it does mean that Ryan can't tell me that I have to use Ryan to get rid of the bees.
That's right. That's right. That's right. So if yes, and your answer was yes, does this scenario suggest the superintendent is in compliance with a reasonable interpretation? In other words, if the superintendent says, I've got this, I, I'll take care of this and I'll report it back to you. And then you'll just hear his compliance as he reports back to you.
Your superintendent's actually gonna refer you back to policy B twenty-seven. And say, if people are coming to the board to make a complaint and they haven't gone through
The chain of command.
Chain of command to get there, you should redirect them back that way so that we don't keep having to do this kind of. Chain of command to get there, you should redirect them back that way so that we don't keep having to do this kind of thing.
Excellent.
Because if you come and you start listening to this, we can start having lots of people come on a regular basis.
But they're sitting in front of you.
Yeah, so, if this is how people get things done.
Yeah.
We're pretty good actually about saying, like, there's an introduction to our meeting where it says, we'll take public comment, but we will not be taking any action.
Are you? That's very helpful.
And we will redirect you to the chain of command, right? Something like that.
Yes, okay, here's a different one. Let's say the superintendent supports a, submits a monitoring report that reveals the district is out of compliance on student confidentiality and the treatment of records. So the board, I mean, the superintendent says so, new superintendent, first year, going through the executive limitations reports, finds out, this happened to me, finds out that there was no consistent, um, procedure in the district on student records. So when I had to do that report, I had to say, we're out of compliance. And, so what happens next? First of all, whose job is it to be in compliance with that policy?
Superintendent.
Superintendent. So what's the board's role in this? How does the board respond to this?
We're gonna ask, when are you gonna be compliant?
When, when are you gonna be compliant?
That's correct. You're not gonna ask, how are you gonna be compliant? He has to figure that out. When are you gonna be compliant? And what can you expect the superintendent will then do?
Get compliant.
And come back.
And report back.
And report back. So, you might say to the superintendent, when will you be compliant? I need two months. Alright, so we're gonna put this on the November board agenda. We'd like you to bring us an updated report on the compliance. And all, everything else he was compliant with, but this one section he wasn't, we want you to bring back a report on that. It's that simple to do. There is a playbook of situations if you don't have your own. You do have one?
Yeah.
They've got it.
Yeah.
I think, you know, this gets into questions for me about, what happens if it really goes off the rails?
Yeah.
Like, what happens if the superintendent, and I know this is never gonna happen, by the way, but in the hypothetical terrible land of my mind, um, what happens if the superintendent is non-compliant and it just gets worse somehow? You know, in this particular scenario, maybe the records, not only is the procedure not there, but they get left out on the street in boxes, you know, things like that. What does the board do when there's just chronic?
Chronic, vague keyword.
Like, chronic lack of compliance and there's no sign of it getting better.
So, first question I have is, is it a new superintendent? And the reason I have that question is, somebody new to your district who does their own interpretation of your policies may identify things that are out of compliance according to their reasonable interpretation.
Let's, let's, for, for this scenario, let's assume.
But. They've been around a while.
Uh, they're, they're competent enough to know better.
Yeah, and they, they, and they have been responsible for at least a year or two to make sure those systems are compliant and now they're reporting non-compliance.
And again, this is more to save my own curiosity. I'm not preparing for anything.
And it's chronic.
Ryan, I think this, I actually think, I'm gonna cut Jeannie off here for a second. I think that when you say that this scenario never happens, this scenario happens all the time, actually. And a lot of the reason that it happens is because boards aren't clear about what their ends are or what their limitations are. So, what I would say in this situation is you gotta do two things. If I'm reporting the non-compliance, then I, my reasonable interpretations, whatever we're doing, we're not in compliance. You wouldn't have to ask me how long until that's gonna be in compliance because I'm gonna tell you right out of the, right out of the gate saying, I'm probably gonna put together a plan and say, this is my plan for addressing it. Whether I have to or don't have to do that, I'm probably gonna do it because I've worked with enough boards to know, I better give you an idea about how I think I get into compliance with this. Because if it, if at that point you think it's not going to get me into compliance, you better say something or you better go into your limitations and change your limitation or your ends, right? So there's that scenario. If I'm reporting it, if you're regularly as a board, and I think this is the more common place, right? Cause superintendents don't generally go out there and say, I'm gonna really tick the board off today by not doing what it is that they want me to do.
Right, and.
Right?
They don't always come forward and say, I haven't been in compliance year after year after year on this.
Right? So what more likely happens is that you're not clear in either your ends or your limitations. And so at that point, what's gotta go on there is you gotta look, I think as a board, at what's your role in that, in that process? Cause the relationship between a board and a superintendent is just that, it's a relationship. And so, my career's been built out of having to guess what board's wanting me to do and read them and try to figure it out, right? So, this board, as a policy governance board, I, it's not supposed to be like that. So I still have those natural tendencies to say, okay, what's Ryan really asking for here? What is, what does this look like? And it's gonna take a while to change to be complete. You see Ann and I having the conversations at board meetings on a regular basis around, oh, but Ann, I just note that if I don't ask this question of the board, they're not, they're thinking something else. They haven't looked at, like, you know, I've, I've been through all of the limitations one time now. And some of them, I was writing the, I was writing my monitoring report after being here for thirty days. Maybe it was sixty days, right?
Yeah, it started really early.
So, it's, it's hard to know. Like, I'm, I'm kind of excited to go back and do it a second time. It was the format, it was, how do I get to know this board? What's going on here? What does that look like? So when you look at that relationship, I think that it becomes about, how does the board get more clear about what it's looking for? And then if the superintendent continues to not get the job done in the way the board's expecting, then we're gonna have a conversation and, you know, for me, it's gonna be, okay, I'm gonna go do, I'm gonna go do something else. Like, if you, if you're asking me to violate, uh, let's say, contracting laws or you're steering contracts towards certain people, right? I'm gonna say, wait a second, I can't be a part of that. And if that doesn't make you happy, then it's time for us to go separate ways.
And I think, you know, that gets, that is very helpful, but also ultimately gets back to my question of, you know, what does the board do in a situation where it's like?
It's really not working.
It's really not working. Like, we're imagining a scenario where, you know, maybe the superintendent is seeing, like, yeah, I'm in, I'm within reason, and the board unanimously says, no, like, this is completely unreasonable. You're not within that defined scope of reason. Like, this is grossly out of line. What, what then? What occurs?
So, first, whatever concerns you have around the superintendent and they're not doing something or doing something you don't like or whatever it is, the non-compliance, first figure out where it fits. Look at your policies. That's step number one. Figure out what policy or policies it's talking about. Look at what the superintendent has written as a reasonable interpretation. Is that what the board means? Maybe it needs to be tighter. Um, I'm aware of a school board that, um, wanted a little bit more control on the hiring of staff, wanted data on the hiring of staff. They're really trying to diversify staff. And so the board said, well, I'm following all the laws and regulations and it's coming to you. And the board said, but we don't know anything about what your pool is like. Where does it say I had to report a pool? You didn't tell me that. I'm, I can do that. I can report a pool. I can tell you how many candidates, how many of color, how many were interviewed, you know? Um, so the board went back to their policy instead of just making it part of lore. They went back to their policy and said, um, and added to a policy that we want this information provided. Um, so, that's great. Now the superintendent knows and they do it. But, in your scenario, it's not happening.
Right.
Things just aren't working. Um, in that case, the board always retain, I mean, you are hiring the superintendent. You start by looking at your policies, you tighten them up, and you also can, I didn't talk about this earlier. I started to and I said, I'll come back to it. You don't have to just accept the superintendent's report. You can go out and either do a direct inspection. If you have financial concerns, you have to do an audit anyway each year. You could do an extra audit. Um, and that's what a direct inspection would be. A direct inspection actually is the board, that's an external inspection. You could bring in experts. Um, you could bring in an expert and you're getting a lot of complaints about your special ed process. And the superintendent says, but I'm doing everything right. Well, we decided we want a third-party review of our special ed process. You can do that.
But it has to be a board decision.
It's a board decision. Yep, yep, exactly. The board decides. Um, and then you do what you can with that information.
Yeah, that was an ex, well, ex.
There's an external, um, inspection or a direct inspection. Direct inspection is when you, the board, um, decide that you want, either the board as a whole or a small subcommittee of the board to dig deeper into this particular policy. And that might include doing things like, um, climate surveys to get a sense of what the climate of the district is.
True.
And my, or focus groups, or, um, actually sitting with the key leaders, the principals and directors and doing like a questionnaire focus group as a specific method, board approved, board determined to get, um, a direct inspection of treatment of staff, say, of a particular policy. Not you, just the board member, just decide to go off and start asking people what they think about your superintendent. But the board as a whole says, we're gonna go with a direct inspection and maybe we did a direct inspection, um, at RNESU around financial policies. I think you might have been on that committee that sat down and looked through the entire binder and sat with the business manager and really talked through, because they wanted to understand it better, actually.
So what's the logistics of that? Like, in the, let's imagine that we think the CEO is just not, you know, following a policy. It's going where we're grinding against these stones and we eventually say, okay, you know, we really need a direct inspection. How do we kick that off? You know, do we just move to do that?
There'd have to be a motion.
Okay.
But you would define what your direct inspection is.
And wouldn't it have to be tied to the language in the policy also?
Yeah, so you'd have to define it.
So the other thing that you might do first is to really look at the language of your policy to see that, make sure that it's, it's limiting the behave, you know, whatever it is that you're concerned about, that it's, that it's sort of maybe, um, you know, putting it a little bit more narrow in terms of the, the ability to, to act within, you know, initially your policy might say you can act within this frame, but you, you've obviously, you're, you're uncomfortable with that. So then you just rein them in a little bit with a little bit more specific language about what it exactly you're talking about that you don't want them doing.
And sometimes that information actually comes out of the direct inspection. Like, maybe you want your committee to look deeper at the policy and come back to the board. Does this policy really say what we think it says? And you could do that as well. And sometimes there's just a mismatch. And you can have that conversation of, we're looking for more. But generally, what you want, what the policies do is they help you avoid doing the gotcha evaluation.
Yeah.
Like, you know, here's all the stuff we told you to do. Oh, why didn't you do this? You know?
So how often have you seen a board just go change a policy and then, and so they, upon monitoring, they say, you're not in compliance, they go and they change the policy and now there's no way to get into compliance?
Well, ideally, there is a way, but now the superintendent has new marching orders.
Yeah.
So, now the superintendent.
And does it trigger immediately?
Uh, yeah. It, yes and no. You should trigger the reasonable interpretation immediately because that way you know if you're on the same page. But then he may say after reasonable interpretation, this is going to take us three months or next school year to come into compliance with this. And this is why, these are the steps that have to happen. But now that we all understand what it is you want me to do, you know, because you've now accepted a new reasonable interpretation, which has been changed by your changed language. So that, you should expect the reasonable interpretation like the next meeting. So that is, marching orders are clear.
And the reasonable expla- uh, explanation is, or interpretation is not the full report.
Interpretation. Correct.
It's just, this is the policy, this is how I interpret it.
This is what I believe it means. And this is the rationale for my interpretation. That's all they would do. Yep. And then if it's still, if your board then gets that and says, that isn't what we meant either. You know, the superintendent might even be able to help you refine the policy as they're, they're listening to you talk, but it's your job to, to do that, to be clear. And you will have different interpretations by different superintendents on the exact same wording. So sometimes you might have to go down a level. What's on your mind, Ryan?
Oh, that's good. That, thank you, that helps.
Yeah.
Well, and remember too, if they're non-compliant, 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 that's your evaluation of them too.
Right.
So you can also say, look, you know, we've been working with you and trying to get you to bring things into compliance and you've continually been out of compliance, we're not gonna renew your contract.
Okay, and that's ultimately the final consequence.
Yes, yes. We'll get there, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, we do a two-year contract and then the, the board would just eventually say like, geez, not happening.
But now you have some really, you also have some really clear evidence.
Sorry, I'm, I'm very much the kind of person like, what happens if my house burns down? That's, that's the kind of planning I like, I, I reflexively go to. Like, you know, so that's, that's why I'm like, what, where, where do you go? Like, if things are just burning down, you know?
Yeah, yeah. He's, he's accountable to you and you're accountable to your owners. So if you have an underperforming superintendent or who's not performing in the direction that you want the district to go, then you let him go. And you can do that. I mean, that's what your responsibility is. After working and trying to make it work. And keep in mind that the first year you have a superintendent, you're really evaluating their interpretation of what the last person did.
Yeah.
So, you know, you have to be careful about, um, coming down too hard until there's an opportunity to improve it.
And, and it sounds like ultimately the board's true, like, I mean, stick here, you know, is, we're not gonna renew the contract. There's no, there's nothing before that. Like, this is so bad that we need to move to fire you.
Yeah, you can. Absolutely.
Oh, yeah, yes, if there's, yeah, they're breaking the law.
Yeah. You don't have to have two years of monitoring reports to decide that it's not working with a particular superintendent. But the very fact that you've been doing the monitoring reports, you've been working with them, does indicate, should that superintendent choose to sue being fired, that you've been a, you have clearly communicated. But, and there are some things that are just absolutely egregious.
Right.
Yeah, it's gonna fall under.
Yeah, I mean, a, a superintendent who is out of compliance with your financial policies that say you will not break the law, I mean, that's the very first, well, yeah. We're not, we're not asking you to interpret that. You shall not break the law. You did, so.
And what, do they, do, do boards just move to do that? Do they just move to like, wow?
I, I've never been on a board when, when that's happened.
We could just call Pedro.
Yeah, there you go. Good answer, Rachel. You call Pedro.
Yeah, it would be, it would be.
And you have a discussion in an executive session because it's a personnel matter. And then the community gets upset because it's executive session. But you wanna talk with your attorney about that, but yes.
Debbie, when you, from your experience here in, in Vermont, when you have a superintendent and a board working under policy governance that's working well, how often is that superintendent not meeting the performance expectations of the board? I try to think.
That would mean, how often are they reporting non-compliance in their reports, essentially?
Or how, I, I think what I hear Ryan, Ryan is, Ryan's at the spot is, things are a catastrophe. The district's not going in the way I want it to go and how do I replace the superintendent? How often does that happen in a quick way in policy governance, right?
Never.
It doesn't.
And this is exactly what I would expect to happen.
Unless it's egregious. Unless it's egregious.
But I'm just, I was very curious about the mechanisms by which that occurs.
So, I think when you're looking at boards that have significant problems with their superintendent or superintendents that have significant problems with their boards, there's not clear expectations about what the superintendent is supposed to do.
But the policy government solves that.
Yes.
Yes, and so that's why your role in looking at that to say, hey, is my interpretation of what you're giving me reasonable? So you start there. And you might have to say yes. And I understood lots of times, like, like, as I heard you talk this year, this came up, especially at the beginning of the year, multiple times, that we just have to say it's reasonable because it's reasonable. Well, no, the answer to that is not. Yes, you do have to say it's reasonable if it's reasonable, but then you go into that executive limitation and you tighten it down so that my interpretation becomes not reasonable at that point. That's what's your course of action, so.
And I recall that we had a. And I recall that we had a good scenario there at Brookfield, where we had that discussion where we did, I don't know if we tightened it up or not, but we had a very good conversation about if it was reasonable or not.
Yeah, so when you're looking, when you're looking at that, that's why I think you don't see that happening in policy governance, because over time, you, you work that way. And then ultimately, you know, it's a relationship. Again, it's that, it's the give and the take in the superintendent at that point. I would imagine that there are boards in policy governance that become not happy with their superintendent.
Often as a result of board turnover.
Yep.
And the new board turnover interprets the policies differently as well.
Yeah, well, and I also think the other thing that happens is, my experience is that every superintendent brings certain skills to a district. And the longer that that superintendent is in the district, the better the district gets at that, at those skills and whatnot. Now, there's some superintendents out there that are probably really good. If you look at somebody who can stay in the same district for a really long time, they somehow change and adapt and grow and do something else. And then there's superintendents that come in, they're good at this set of things, and they're a good match for you, they bring you along, and then it's time for them to go somewhere else.
Cause you want a new set of skills.
And do it someone's up, cause you're looking for something different.
Cause now that, that issue's been resolved, and now you have a new one coming up, so you're looking for new skills.
Yeah, and it's, so there's, there's, you know, I think everybody brings a certain strength to something, and that you've gotta decide, how's that, how does that, what does that look like in the long run? Are you gonna keep working in a place where you've brought it as far as you can bring it, and now you're just making little, little steps?
But you wanna be here forever, right?
I mean, I think H454 tells me I'm gonna be here for three years if you believe in H454.
Believe it, I see it.
So I, I think it's, I think, like, right now, the governance in Vermont is a really interesting, it's an interesting thing, because how I approach things in today's climate is going to be different than I approached things six years ago.
Even, two months ago.
Yeah, I think, I think I had a pretty good idea that what was on the, what was on the horizon. So I think, I think we've been positioning for what was likely to come down. If you think about some of the things that we did right from the beginning of me getting here, you can see how that's sort of playing out a little bit with the conversation with Payne Mountain, with H454, with, like, I have a, I think that one of the things that I think that a superintendent does is, it look, he, she looks out in the future and says, where does this district need to be, and how do I, how do I get you there? Your job is to also say, this is where we need to be, and, you know, leave it up to, leave it up to the superintendent to get me there. Like, if you had said right from the beginning, no, we have no interest in having any kind of conversation with anybody about potentially merging, then I gotta say, okay, the board has spoken. Right? So that, that meeting up in Brookfield that you're remembering, the thing I remember from that meeting in Brookfield was that was the first time that I said out loud in a public meeting, our building over here is in really tough shape, and you're gonna have to figure out, are you gonna have a conversation with other people, or are you just gonna go it alone? And that was me dipping my toe in to say to you, you probably should be talking to other people. Right? And lo and behold, right out of the gate, you all said, well, yeah, we should talk about, we should talk with our neighbors about what kind of things we have.
You master manipulator. Yeah, but he's transparent about it.
It's synonymous with administrator, right?
A good one, yeah.
So, you know, you know, that was, that was a way of figuring out, hey, where do you need to, where do you need to go? This is where Vermont's headed, so can I help you get there? Or you could have a whole different approach, cause there's districts, there's supervisory unions right now that don't want anything to do with that, and they're saying to their superintendent, find us a solution that doesn't force us to merge in with somebody else. Right? And the superintendents who are, who are working, yes.
Yeah, I know one district that at least says that.
Yes.
Won't get anywhere, but.
One's to succeed from the.
Yeah, pretty much.
So that's, that superintendent's tasked with a different set of, different set of skills and has to decide, hey, is this, well, and how am I gonna go about doing this?
And I'm thinking about our students in all of this. Like, how do we make sure we don't lose sight of,
Right.
Students are in school now, and are we preparing them? Cause with all these adults making all these decisions that they don't have any choice in, you know, we've gotta make sure we don't lose sight of.
We hire up for learning, and we force those people to listen to kids talk about what their vision is.
Force what people to listen?
The district line drawing committee.
Oh, right, those people.
Those people.
Yeah.
Those people, and other people. I mean, you know, you've heard me say it over and over again, Vermont doesn't have a vision of what education should be statewide. Doesn't exist. Right? There's lots of little pieces. Wouldn't be super hard to take all of the things that the state requires and gets reports about and whatnot.
Doesn't have an ends policy.
We don't, doesn't have an ends policy.
It doesn't, yeah.
It is, it's true. It has a lot of, has a lot of little pieces, and you can kind of guess.
You guys are really taking away local control.
Not really. I mean, under policy governance.
You said an hour ago that the ends was the only place I had local control. Now you're telling me.
You don't have to do the, you don't get to do the operations. You have to apply for the transportation coordinator job if you wanna figure out the bus routes. Any other applications?
Did you say something about that compliance doesn't always equal performance? I think that's really important.
Yeah, yeah, I think I implied it, I didn't say it. But compliance doesn't always equal performance. In the sense that, like I said, that example I gave you of finding out that a district I just came to didn't have a good student records procedure in place, or I forget what you identified, but, you know, when you're coming in in particular, or if, if you have policies that really speak to your finances and your students and how you're prioritizing things, and then, again, I'm back on this, federal funds don't come through. And so now, as superintendent, you have to come forward and say, I am out of compliance with this part of the ends policy because we just lost all of our SFR funds because we're not receiving them in the state. I can't tell you when I'm gonna come back in compliance. That isn't really his performance, but he is reporting it. Does that make sense? Yeah, if he, yeah.
Yeah, equity, equity was one too, where we felt, we have some equity policies written in our policy governance manual. Recognizing what the federal government is doing, we realized we're not able to be in compliance with those, some of those policies. But that's not a reflection of our superintendent's performance, that's more a reflection of the realities.
Political realities today, yeah.
So just, yeah, I just wanted to say that because, again, you might not be in compliance. So that's a different example from what Ryan was talking about.
Slightly funny trail, but quick query. Where are the majority of school, student test performances kept? Is it in the cloud?
Oh, well, there's the Agency of Education page. And then I don't know if you have a district page.
I would zero down on Martha's question a little bit before I started to answer again. So what performance indicators are you specifically asking about?
I don't really know specifically, but I know that there were some testing with the iRead program that was very much alarming to me as I dug into it. This is independent of anything here. I have no idea where, where that fits into the local city.
So if I were.
And there, they were saying that they were going to the cloud, and the concern about it being in the cloud is that businesses such as TikTok could access that kind of information and then start channeling those students info, you know, in, in different regards, like TikTok's known to do.
So, the example that you just used, I could report that we do not have a problem with very easily.
You also can point to, I think it's under asset protection, where you talk about your information technology systems, privacy systems. And you can point to where you are in compliance because you have those systems in place.
That is quite an art project.
Are there?
No, no, I wanna expand my question a little bit because I narrowed it down to the iRead type scenario, but what about any of the other kind of major testing procedures and where those, those records are kept? Are there student records kept in the cloud?
Yes, there are student records kept in the cloud. Let's start with the state testing.
Okay.
Right? We're required to do the state testing. The state testing is a computer-based test. The results live in the cloud.
And?
Is this relevant to our training?
I'm gonna make it relevant by saying, rather than answer the question about the cloud, your concern is about the safety of the, of the information in the cloud.
Exactly.
That does fall under asset protection. And, I'm pretty sure it's asset protection. I can't find it.
It was up there, I think, allow.
Allow information files to be exposed to loss or significant damage. One of his monitoring reports can speak to what the information technology protection procedures are. I mean, to be honest, he can't even control what's available in the cloud. He can only control your supervisory union district procedures around the use of the cloud.
Right.
And protection of the cloud. But you, I mean, the state puts it in the cloud. You can't control their IT systems, but you can control yours.
Right, and if I, so if I were going into a monitoring report, that's part of the other thing is if, generally speaking, my, my take is, when you look at this monitoring report, if that was an area that people were concerned about, then you would come in under an executive limitation.
That's right, under this one, probably.
You know, you would zero down on what I can and can't do. So if Martha is, position is, none of our data should be stored in the cloud, then she's welcome to propose that to the board. But Martha, as a single board member, doesn't have any authority to say, don't store the records in the cloud. You need, you need four other people, Martha and four other people on this board to do that. Right? So that's the kind of, that's the place where, when the board's speaking with one voice, becomes really important. So I'd come back in on this one, I'd report, here's the technical term for the encoding that the state is using on this data, and da-da-da. And so I would report that we're in compliance with the safety of our cybersecurity.
A good example is number seven. Your accounting procedures have to follow the generally accepted accounting procedures that exist. Information technology also has some best practice procedures that you would report that you are following. Where I see this as relevant, Rachel, is when you do have a new board member who is asking questions, if you can direct those questions back to, what policy are you questioning? And then, does that policy lack information? Cause you'd like to hear more about privacy in the cloud, then visit the policy and put it in there so that you get that specifically if you don't have it yet. If it doesn't fit any of the policies, again, ask yourself the question, whose job is it really?
And so this ties back into Ryan's question about, if I'm out of compliance or you're viewing me out of compliance, if you haven't been clear about what you're looking for, and you're asking me to read your mind about what it is that you're hoping I'm gonna report about, then it's really not me out of compliance at that point, it's your.
So what if, in that scenario right there, the state says, you're not allowed to not keep student records in the cloud, we, we need those records.
Yep.
Then obviously, you need to go back to executive limitations where you have to follow the law.
That's right.
That's right.
That's right, so I'm gonna tell you.
But you have to explain it, why, why that's the case.
Yeah, yeah.
So then you'd say, I'm not in compliance with this. However, I am compliant with state law.
And if I were.
Which is the global.
That's right, I'm really right, yeah.
Which is the global policy which overrules the.
Throw another twist to it. What if I'm a parent and I say, I don't want my student? Do parents have the right to be able to say?
Well, again, I'm gonna take.
Mine's only going to be held in a, in a written fashion.
I'm taking every question that you're bringing, Martha, as a scenario kind of question. So you're now asking about treatment of parents and students and staff, and there is something in the parent pol, treatment of parents policy that says they will be notified, they will, collecting, reviewing, transmitting, or storing student family information. Storing is like, also like those test scores, against proper, improper access. Right now, are inappropriate accessibility and privacy. I mean, so, so for you to throw out a question like that at a board meeting kind of throws us off the agenda, but it's a helpful scenario for the board then to say, okay, what are the concerns that this board member has? And where are they addressing the policy? This is gonna be our scenario tonight, let's take a couple minutes. You're not necessarily gonna get your answer, but at that meeting, because that's not really appropriate. It's kind of like a, you're supposed to know everything that's on my mind before you walk in the door, you know? And be ready to answer it, okay?
Right.
Which actually, you do a pretty good job, but. But, but it's more, see what I, I'm trying to redirect the specific questions like that to where do they fit in here? Where do they fit? And are you getting the information you need?
I don't begin to know where to ask these questions.
Sure, yeah.
And I did raise it at the very opening when he gave it a public interview, when he was at the very start, but, you know.
Yeah.
So it's been there for a long time, and it hasn't surfaced again since now.
So I would say that your role as a board member is to be really familiar with your board policies, so that you do know where it fits in, and you look at it, and then we're about to adopt the work plan for the year. Right? So at some point next year, I'm going to be giving you information about my interpretation of whether I'm in compliance with this or not. Your job is to, there we go, huh? Your job is to create the limitations in a way that drive me towards the compliance that you're looking for.
Yeah.
Right? And that's where, that's where you create it.
And if the board as a whole agrees that you wanna make sure that you're getting information on how information technology is properly stored, then you're building that right into that policy. Yeah.
So what I hear you saying as a way to sort of help us digest the policies, if we have questions or scenarios like Martha's raised, we can take those in our own time, go back to the policies and say, where does this really fit, whose job is this?
And, and make a scenario out of it, a rehearsal for the next meeting.
Yeah, let, let your chair know.
Yeah.
I started to point at Ann, but she's your only chair in the room, so.
And I, I have found that those, those, we do a scenario at every meeting, except for around budget time, and it's just so too busy. That scenario, there's so much learning because it makes you, the first thing the board does is they open up the board manual, and they, or the policy manual, and they're like, okay, it speaks to the, it speaks to that. And the more you do that, the more familiar, as you were saying, Michael, the board becomes with the policies. The other way we've become very familiar with our policies is, Jeannie said before that the board doesn't have to report on its own policies, right? The board management delegation.
They don't need to do a written report.
But we do. And we do that because, again, it helps us understand what the policy says and how we interpret that policy, and how we show evidence that we're in compliance with it. And so, and it's, and we, and it's.
But what you did is you created a form that makes it, I mean, you don't write the kind of report that your superintendent writes.
Not so extensively, no.
Yeah.
And I can share with you how we do it. It's really, it's, and what we, what we do is we map out those policies just like the ELs are mapped out on the annual work plan, and we assign them to a board member. So I might take unity of control, So I might take, um, unity of control and I'll be assigned to report on that in September. And so I come with using that form and it doesn't take me more than 15 minutes really during, while I'm reading through the packet, maybe a little bit more depending on how big the policy is, to write, to fill in the table and show evidence of how we've been following that unity, unity of control. And then I take it to the board meeting and, and present it. And then we check the box and say, okay, we monitored that policy. And honestly, the more, every year, it's just a question of tweaking it because it's just like you're fighting on your second year after you've written those policy monitoring reports one time, you basically have them all written. You can go back and just see, oh yeah, this is what we did last year. Has that changed at all? Maybe we've done some more.
Yeah, that's kind of what we do.
Does it look something like this?
Yes, it does.
So I, I took it, I think you shared with me.
I think she did, yeah.
And I, but what, we weren't assigning it to a particular board person.
We weren't at first, we went to that.
And so I don't know.
It was taking too long in a meeting.
I mean, fellow board members, I don't know how effective it was because I don't.
We all, yeah, the idea is that we all are supposed to think about that.
Be, right.
Yeah. But it took a lot of time, right?
Yeah.
Well, nobody would do it.
Or, or no time at all.
So there was no real.
It took a lot of time, but nobody did.
I shouldn't say nobody did.
So by assigning it to a board, by, you know, you're spreading the wealth among the board members, then it's just, somebody says this, you know, a board member says, this is my interpretation and I think we're doing it and this is why or not. It, it opens the door for conversation about that policy and maybe you don't need the door open and you say, I agree. Rachel, you did a fabulous job.
Right, awesome. You could do it really quickly with a bunch of them, cause there's not a lot.
You can.
Yeah, I think some of them are pretty simple, but.
And others are a little bit more meaty, but. I, I think we, I think it's the same, but send me yours anyway.
I will, and, and honestly, we, the timing of when you report on them should come aside when things are happening. So when you have a board turnover and your reorganization meeting happens like in March, one of the things we will, one of our policies we monitor is the board job description. Because then that helps us, the new board members really understand what the board job description is. So there's a kind of a method to our madness, if you will. And so I can even send you the annual work plan and how we've mapped out those policy monitoring schedules for the board.
Yeah, I think I, I think I used your work plan.
Yeah.
I, well, I kind of added it to ours.
Yeah, I looked at yours. It looks pretty good.
But send it anyway.
Sure, I do see some heads down and stomachs growling. I promised eight o'clock, so.
We're there.
Thank you very much for, I hope you found this helpful.
So we'll hear from you, um, the next week versus the following week.
Yes, well, actually Mike, Michael's got the email. I don't have the emails of the people. I suppose I can find them.
There you go. You've got the paperwork packet.
Oh, they are.
And your, their letters.
But I can do that, that's, that's my job tomorrow is to reach out to those people and invite them to.
Tell them the date.
An interview.
No, you don't count them.
See, now, isn't that a sort of shirking or?
No, that's a how. You just delegated to the superintendent that you want to set up interviews with these board members. Please go make that happen. And he's doing the how.
Okay.
And so he'll tell you, well, we can come on the 16th or two can or.
I trust the superintendent to tell us when he's getting overboarded with our various whimsical requests.
It's not terribly whimsical, we need a board member.
So Ann, whenever you're ready to adjourn, I can stop record.
Oh. Uh, we're ready to adjourn at eight ten.